Good evening, everybody. We'd like to get the meeting started, so if I may just ask everybody to take your seats. Once again, if everybody wouldn't mind, please taking their seats and keeping the noise volume down so that we can start the meeting. I would appreciate it. All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October 14th meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. Once again, if I could ask everybody to please quiet down so that we can begin the meeting. Thank you. My name is Jay Mankara, and I am ZBA chair. To my right is Josh Neely, vice chair, and to his right JP Boucher, member. Going across the stage, Robert Shaw, member, Steve Lionel, member, and alternate Joseph Patry. We do have a full complement of five ZBA members this evening, so all five will be voting and participating unless a member has to recuse himself for some reason. Mr. Patry is an alternate, will participate, though, in all of our discussions and will vote in the event of a recusal. So just going through the order of business a little bit, so we have two different types of cases before us this evening. We have requests for variances. A request for a variance is a request to deviate from the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and in order to grant a variance, the zoning board has to find that five criteria are met. We have to find that the variance, granting the variance would be within the public interest, that it would be within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance, that by granting the variance substantial justice would be done, that there'd be no diminution of surrounding property values, and that owing to some special condition in the property, failure to grant the variance would result in an unnecessary hardship to the owner seeking it. We also have requests for a special exception this evening. A special exception is a use that is allowed in the zoning ordinance so long as certain criteria is met. So each of these obviously are handled by the board somewhat differently. So in terms of the order of business, for each case, I'll read the case into the record, and the applicant will be invited to come up to the podium, and will have 15 minutes to present his or her case. Following that, we'll ask if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the application. And any individual who wishes to speak in favor can come up to the podium, state his or her name and address, and will have five minutes to address the board in any way you wish. Following that, we will ask if there is anybody in the audience who has questions, concerns, or opposition. Very similarly, you'll be able to come up to the microphone, give your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes. Following that, we will allow the applicant to come forward, and the applicant will have five minutes to provide any rebuttal that the applicant wishes to provide. Again, that's not required, but they nay. And then following that, we will open up the floor to one person who spoke in opposition to the application to come forward and have final words. Usually what happens when there's a fair number of people is we'll give you a moment to talk amongst yourselves and figure out who might be the best person to come forward to speak for the opposition. So that's kind of the order of business. Obviously, we have a lot of people here this evening, so we will ask that if you, when you are coming forward to speak, to try not to repeat what other people have said. So if somebody has said something you agree with, you can just say so. You could state your overall position, but obviously, we want to have a chance to hear from everyone. We did get several communications for the board this evening, so we do have a number of emails. The board members have all received everybody's communications, and we have them with us, and they will be part of the record. So if you did submit a letter to us and you had a lot of points to make, you know, feel free to reference your letter. Again, you can summarize. You don't need to state everything that you said. Trust that we do have it, that we have read these materials. So with that, hopefully, that's clear to everybody, but we'll give you reminders as we go along. So with that, oh, and I should also add that to my left is deputy planning manager Carter Falk. So with that, I'm going to call the roll unless there's something anybody believes I forgot to mention. Mr. Shaw?
The one change in the agenda?
Oh, my goodness, you're right. There is a change on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. The second case on the agenda for this evening, which is the application of the city of Nashua, Division of Public Works, has been postponed until the October 28th meeting. I suspect a lot of people here are for the first case, which is the application of the fire department. That is on the agenda tonight, but if you are here specifically for the public works application, that is not going to be heard until the 28th. Thank you for that. So with that, I'll call the roll. Mr. Neely?
Present.
Mr. Boucher?
Present.
Mr. Shaw?
Present.
Mr. Lionel?
Present.
Mr. Patry?
Present.
And I am present as well. So with that, I'm going to read the first case into the record. First case is the application of the city of Nashua. Chief Steve Buxton, Nashua Fire Rescue is the applicant, 25 Teak Drive and 840 West Hollis Street, requesting special exception from land use code section 190-112 to work in a 40-foot other wetland and wetland buffer to construct a gated driveway from Teak Drive to the Four Hills landfill property for the purpose of a proposed fire training facility or for the proposed fire training facility. Is somebody present to speak for the applicant?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Steve Buxton, and I serve as the chief of Nashville Fire Rescue. I'm here to provide an overview of our current training operations and discuss the proposed relocation of our training facility and seek your approval of a wetland special exemption under the land use code to allow access through wetland buffer areas. Through this process, we have engaged the services of GOV Environmental Services. Brendan Quigley, who is here this evening, has worked diligently with us to navigate the permitting process and board reviews at both the local and state level. Brendan will assist us with answering the more technical questions that you may have later on. I want to point out that we have received a favorable recommendation for the Conservation Commission, and tonight, I request your approval of our proposed special exemption. To give you a little background, since the early 1980s, the fire department has maintained a training facility at the landfill property. Over the years, we've developed a very strong working relationship with Public Works, growing to meet the needs of an evolving community. Well, the co-location of a fire training facility in a DPW operation is rather unusual, has proven to be both efficient and effective, and the relocation of our operation is still on landfill property. In the more than 40 years that we've been at that location, I'm not aware of any recorded complaints or concerns from neighboring properties, and we have always taken great pride in being respectful, responsible neighbors, and that commitment will continue. So you might ask, why do we need to relocate the training facility? Relocating the proposed site will allow us to provide a more effective and modern training for our firefighters. Props that we have utilized in the past have been placed out of service. We had an aging concrete training building that was torn down and removed, several essential training props that were taken out of service over time, a car fire prop, a roof ventilation simulator, a dumpster fire prop, and a gas fire field. I bring this to your attention because when you look at our facility currently, it looks like it takes up not too much space, but over the years, it has been minimized because some of those props have been placed out of service. Our newest prop allows us to operate and conduct live fire training in addition to technical rescue operations on a much smaller prop, much smaller scale than we have been used to. Many of the props I've mentioned will be reactivated at the new site to enhance the realism of our fire training for our growing community. While the proposed location meets our operational needs, it does require some infrastructure updates, the first being water supply. We plan to bring water, a water line in from Teak Drive. We have looked at extending the line through the landfill. That would require 3,000-plus feet of piping and a booster pump due to pressure limitations coming in from the West Hall Street side. This makes it cost prohibitive and very inefficient. By contrast, the distance from Teak Drive is approximately 1,000 feet, and pressure levels that exist there are sufficient for our operation. This upgrade would allow us to bring a water supply in to our training facility, which requires us to have two hydrants to conduct live fire training, and an added benefit is it would allow us to have a hydrant on that side of the landfill, which we currently do not. This would significantly improve our ability to suppress fires on landfill property, and quite honestly, those do occur from time to time. The second thing we need out there for infrastructure is power. Power is already available at the site nearby due to a cell phone tower infrastructure that already exists. The third thing we need is access, and we need this through a driveway. The existing road through the landfill is unsuitable for regular use. While it serves for small vehicle access to the back of the landfill, making it usable for daily operations would require significant upgrades and likely result in greater environmental impact than the route we are proposing. I'd like to point out that fire apparatus that access this road are highly specialized and expensive pieces of equipment. A fire engine costs approximately $1 million, and an aerial device costs approximately $2 million. Subjecting them to inadequate road conditions in an emergency is one thing, but subjecting them to those conditions repeatedly is not feasible and not very responsible. The driveway we're proposing would be gated, and it would be used by fire apparatus to gain access to our training facility. It would not be an access point for the landfill. All of their operation needs to go in through the main gate, go over scales, so on and so forth, to contribute to their operation. The training site will not generate significant traffic. The usage will be limited, scheduled, and it's very well-controlled. The environmental considerations that we have looked at, to start with a general overview, the proposed site is flat. All of the runoff from the training activities will remain within the boundaries of the landfill property. Our live-fire training that we conduct is strictly regulated by our industry standards as well as the DES. We burn only clean wood and hay, and that is all strictly enforced through state and federal regulations as well. In your packets this evening, I believe you have a copy of our application, and within that, there's quite a bit of information. I recognize the board has a full agenda tonight. However, I wanted to note that the special exception criteria statements are included within this information, and we are available to speak to these points or answer any questions that you may have had or come upon when you reviewed them. Maintaining a training facility within city limits directly impacts our ISO rating, which impacts both the insurance premiums and the public safety metrics of the city of Nashua. Training conducted locally receives higher credit than conducted out of district. More critically, training within the city ensures that our resources remain in district and available for our use immediately in the event of a major emergency. The nearest alternative facility is located in Concord, New Hampshire, and utilizing that facility would take our crews out of service for an extended period of time, which is a risk that we cannot afford to take. A modern local training facility is essential not only for safety and preparedness of our firefighters, but the overall safety and resilience of our community. In closing, I want to be clear, we have a lot of empathy with our butters who have voiced their concerns. As I've stated, in over 40 years at our current location, we have been a good neighbor and have no record of any complaints. I'd like to point out that the proposed site actually places a larger buffer between us and the residents of Teak Drive than we currently enjoy with our neighbors. We have been working closely on this project with the Department of Public Works, and I would like to thank them publicly for their support. We sincerely appreciate your time and consideration for this important project, and when appropriate, I'm willing to answer any questions you may have. At this time, I'd like to introduce Brendan Quigley, who can provide you a high-level overview of the wetlands delineation work that he has done and answer any technical questions that you may have.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brendan Quigley. I'm a certified wetland scientist with GOV Environmental Services in Exeter, New Hampshire. It's been a pleasure to work with the city and the fire department on this project for the last number of months. My primary duties have been related to identification and assessment of the resource areas, specifically the wetlands in the project area, as well as permitting, of course. And what I'd like to talk about briefly tonight is one element of that permitting, which is avoiding some minimization of well and impacts and how we get the project to have this little impact on the wellens as practicable. The most important aspect to this is probably most evident in the location of the driveway, which is shift down from the paper street, which is the envisioned access through this area, and that was done to avoid the more sensitive vernal pool resource, as well as being completely as far away from that as possible so that we're impacting merely a narrow intermittent overflow channel from that welland and a stormwater management system that's directly adjacent to the road. Over the months since applications have been submitted, with the help of DPW, we've worked with the Nashville Conservation Commission, with Department of Environmental Services in New Hampshire, as well as said, New Hampshire Fishing Game, on a number of other smaller adjustments to further that minimization of impacts. Just a couple of bullet points for those, inclusion of a very large four-foot diameter culvert, which has a natural substrate. This is more conducive to wildlife passage, as well as timing of impacts, timing of the work, rather, to have as little impact on wildlife movement as possible. Incorporation of wildlife-friendly erosion control, as well as restoration seed mix that's also good for pollinators, and even some buffer impact reduction through drainage, some minor improvements to the drainage along the driveway. So with all these things in consideration, I'm confident in representing this as the least impacting alternative for this project that is practicable, given the other constraints. And again, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Shaw?
I was going to ask, and if appropriate, were you involved in also going to the Conservation Commission as far as your representation?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I just wanted to try to find that in my packet again, but I was curious, and again, maybe this also needs to be partially answered by the chief, but there's two stipulations that I'm not clear on what the city is actually going to do, and that is the researching of conservation easement to prevent future development near wetlands. And so, to me, that seems kind of a little bit open-ended, and I might, we as a board might want to tighten that language up because we still have the final purview over this. And then the other is about, and this is probably certainly more perhaps, at least you'd have some commentary on it, via the addressing issues, parentheses, dumping in the vernal pool. So can you speak to either or both of those?
Yes. The, first of all, with the dumping in the vernal pool, there was a commitment made to address that through some public outreach sort of activity, as well as a direct cleanup day of some sort to remove what's possible. It is close to a number of houses, and over the years, there is some debris in there that could...
Could you speak up for this?
You could also lift the mic.
Sure. So there was a commitment made to addressing the vernal pool debris through both direct cleanup, as well as a public outreach campaign, which would be sort of an educational, you know, this is what's in your backyard. This is why it's important.
Okay. So I was a little bit confused, so I was thinking it was actually something that was essentially maybe coming about because of operation of the landfill, but in reality, it's actually about the public putting stuff in that area in some fashion.
Yes, and I don't mean to implicate anyone that might be in the audience with regards to actually putting that stuff there, but over time, many, many decades, I imagine, as with any area, it has nothing to do with the landfill at all.
Yeah, okay.
The other issue, I believe, is still being researched, and that is simply some additional protections. The Conservation Commission would like to see some additional protections around that vernal pool. Whether it's an easement or some other mechanism, I think, remains to be seen, and I don't have all the details on that. Like, as the stipulation suggests, it is something that's going to need to be looked into.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Neely?
Would you state once again, what is the distance that this new proposed road is from that paper road that's on the plan here?
I don't have a to-scale plan in front of me.
A ballpark is fine.
It is roughly 80 feet, 70 or 80 feet from the edge of that paper street. I don't know if that's the right term.
Okay. And is this road paved or dirt? This proposed road?
The proposed road will be paved.
Okay. Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, at some point when we're done with questions of the gentleman, I'd like to get the chief back up for a couple of questions.
Absolutely. I have one more wetlands-related question. In some of the correspondence we've received, there was questioning about the amount of wetland that was going to be impacted. On the plan that I'm looking at, wetland impact is 2,545 square feet, and the wetland buffer impact is 9,533 square feet. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what I'm looking at in my plan as well. I'll call your attention to the fact that roughly half of that consists of an existing stormwater basin, or the portion of that basin which would qualify as wetland. That's the area closer to Teak Drive. That was, the road was situated, in addition to being away from the vernal pool, that impact is more favorable, so to speak, than an impact to a natural welland. So even though we had to move the road, we, and incur slightly more welland impact in crossing both those areas, one of them is a stormwater area.
So the direct wetland impact would be to what I guess one could call the man-made wetland, not to the vernal pool. Is that correct?
Well, there's, it's partially correct. There's two impact areas. One of them is a storm, a created stormwater practice, and the second one is a seemingly natural overflow or intermittent connection that functions to drain the vernal pool when water is at highest levels. It is otherwise relatively dry, and it, most importantly, it is not the vernal pool itself.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a wetland-related question? Mr. Shaw?
Maybe it's not that big a thing, but is, I can't, you know, it's not really labeled as such, but there's photo four, but, you know, there's these number of photos that we have in the packet, but is, it's more the question, is that actually a vehicle that's present in that area? Do you know? Because I can't quite tell in at least the black and white image. It looks like it's maybe the front end of a, or part of the front end of a buried vehicle, partially buried vehicle.
No. Well, I apologize. I don't have all those photos in front of me.
I could actually quick show you just to, again, I'm not sure that it's a big factor.
That's actually the head wall for the outlet pipes of that, of that created stormwater practice.
Thank you. If I may ask the chief to return to the podium, we do have a question from the board. Mr. Neely?
Thank you. Chief, thank you for your earlier testimony. Just a couple of quick questions. And I think a lot of what the folks have expressed concerns to us about in the letters we received is the number of vehicles planning on coming through here. We've seen quite a swing in the numbers that folks are writing to us about and what you're testifying about. How many are we really expecting per week, per month? I know those, I think really what's concerning folks is talking about trucks coming from other towns, and I get it. You know, these guys are all over places to train. I understand that. Realistically, how many trucks are we looking at?
So it's very challenging to put a number to that, how many pieces of apparatus. It depends on what is going on. I can tell you that our heaviest use period is in the spring when we run our recruit school. That's about a month-long program that we run from Monday through Friday during business hours, and the companies will come and go through there throughout the day. Some companies might go out there for the whole day, and the next day, there might be no use whatsoever. On the average week, we send companies to the drill yard once or twice a week. There might be a company that goes out in the morning. There might be a company that goes out in the afternoon. It's all scheduled through our department calendar. We have control of when they're going out there. You know, I'm hesitant to commit to a number, but I can tell you that in the wintertime, there is not very heavy use out at the training grounds because it's an outside facility. We do, we are a regional facility. The prop that we have was achieved through a grant, so other departments do come and utilize the training facility from time to time. Again, that's very, it's all scheduled, it's all controlled. We tell them what time they can be there. We tell them what time they have to be out of there.
One more question. And, Chief, and I apologize, you may not be the right person for this, but I think the concerns that we're reading from the folks around there is that this may be, while folks may support the fire apparatus going in and out, this may be a backdoor to start running some garbage trucks in and out of there at some point. I get it, you're probably not the right guy, but I really think that's the underlying concern here. So I think when we get to where we need to be, we need to somehow talk about what can go through there and what can't go through there. And so thank you for your testimony.
Can I speak to that real quickly?
Please.
So I am the guy for that. I have a very close relationship with Lisa Foto, Dan Hudson. We worked hand-in-hand with the DPW throughout all of the years. At our current location, we are right on top of each other. Before they built their new building, trucks would come up in that area from time to time to wash out, and we established a very good relationship. You have to realize, if one of their trucks is driving through our facility where they're operating, they're interfering with our operation, and safety is paramount. So this, I would not be looking to allow this to be a backdoor to the landfill. They have no intention, we're looking to give each other space, so to speak, and get out of each other's way. So this will not be utilized as a backdoor to the landfill, and I've had several conversations with them, and they are full on board with that.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Just because it is in the application, I just, I know you just spoke about it, but so it talks about the annual 30-day recruitment period in the spring, and then it says in two to three days per week, the remainder of the year, and noting about approximately six times per year for budding towns. But the two to three times a week actually sounds a little more than what I felt like you just described. Is there, is there actually that expected frequency, and is there training going on pretty much every week then?
I think what they do is they average that throughout the year. So there's periods of times where we're not out there at all for a week to two weeks. You know, in the middle of winter, if we're having a big winter, we're pretty busy shoveling hydrants and responding to calls. We don't participate out at the training facility much. But in the fall, in the spring, there is heavier use of it, and I think when you average it out over the year, that's what it comes out to.
Okay, that makes sense. The other thing I wanted to go to, I understand the need to relocate. I guess I just would like to at least ask... any other possible locations within the city on essentially already most likely city-owned land? Was there any other locations considered? And again, can you kind of generally speak to that as far as the decision to stay within the landfill versus possibly another location?
Yeah, so this is the most cost-effective, really, the city-owned land without, within the city wouldn't be usable for our purposes. A lot of the lots are next door to commercial property or in residential neighborhoods where it's a single lot, not an expansive area like we have the opportunity to utilize here. This, we already exist on this property, we're literally just moving across the yard.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Neely.
Chief, one more item that came up in the letters was the water pressure for this neighborhood. I know you had spoken about a 3,000-foot line, you're not going to need a booster pump down here, so will these folks not see any pressure drop?
Not that I know of. Penn and Chuck said that there's plenty of pressure on that side to supply our needs, and when they give us information like that, they're factoring in what's already occurring for use.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? If not, thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application? I'm sorry, I apologize, Alderman Jettie, I did want to give you the opportunity to speak because I know you have another appointment this evening.
Seven o'clock meeting that I'm a little late for. But I'm not speaking in favor, I'm speaking opposed.
Understood.
So my name is Ernest Jettie, 15 Foxglove Court, I'm the alderman for Ward Five. I speak on behalf of the Ward Five residents who abut and live in proximity to the landfill, who are in opposition to the city's request for a special exception to allow a roadway to be built on land which was deeded to the city with a restriction that it be, not be built on, and that it be reserved for use as a drainage retention area. I believe that the city's application fails to meet two of the conditions that you must find to grant a special exception. The ordinance requires you to find with due regard to the nature and condition of all adjacent structures and uses in the district where this is located. Item B of the conditions is that the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. And E says the requested use will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or the immediate neighborhood in which it is located. Now, I heard Chief Buxton testify tonight, but at the Conservation Commission, at their meeting of July 1st, he said that the road would be used a significant amount. That was his words, not mine. And he defined that as five days a week for a six-week period, and two to three days per week for the rest of the year. And that's in the meeting of July 1st, and I got that from the minutes. So that's a use which on most weekdays, there will be some fire trucks coming down, turning up Westgate to Goslin to Teak to this road. This is a quiet residential R9 neighborhood with very light traffic currently. These roads are not used, excuse me, these roads are used almost exclusively by people who live there. People don't use Teak to get anywhere else. The construction of this road is going to alter the current condition of the neighborhood. A lot of trees are going to be removed. The topography there, if you've gone there, when you go from Teak Drive onto this area where the road is going to be built, there's quite, you go down quite a steep level, and then you go up a level, a steep level. So in order to make that road usable by fire trucks, the grade is going to have to be altered substantially. There's going to be a lot of fill added to achieve the grade that is required for fire And, you know, remember, it's not the zoning board's job to solve a problem, you know, that the city or the fire department might have. You know, the reason that this training facility has to be moved is because the Board of Public Works wants to put a new garage adjacent to the current office building. It's the sighting of that garage that is going to be, you know, put where the current training facility is. That's why they have to move. So this is a problem that the city has caused, and I don't think it's a problem that you should be solving. If they don't meet the requirements of the special exception, the special exception should be denied. They could keep the facility where it is, they could change the position of the garage, or they could put the facility in a place other than a residential neighborhood. The city owns a lot of land, and if you look at the northwest area of the city, you know, there's an area along Northwest Boulevard, for example, that's a park industrial zone, not an R9, not a residential area. It's not a neighborhood, you know, it's industrial buildings, it's commercial buildings. You know, it could easily accommodate, and it's flat, it could easily accommodate this facility if they have to move at all. So I'll lend my comments there. I thank you for taking me first, and I have to go downstairs now, unless you have questions for me.
Thank you. Any questions for the alderman? Mr. Patrick.
Alderman, what the area of the city that you just mentioned as a potential alternative location, where exactly was that? I missed that, I'm sorry.
Well, if you look, if you look at the northwest part of the city, so west of Northwest Boulevard, and, you know, even, you know, south of that, you know, all of that, almost all of that land is owned by the city. And so, you know, there's plenty, I think, plenty of areas to choose from if they wanted to. I think, you know, I think the city, the Public Works wants to put the garage where they want to put it, and it's where the training facility is now, so they told the fire department, you're going to have to move, but we've got a place for you in another part of the landfill. And, you know, I think the fire department thinks this is an easy, convenient way to, you know, to move their training facility. It's not very far from where it is now, and, you know, with, you know, if you give them the special exception, they'll be able to move it there. But I think the damage that's going to be caused to this neighborhood is irretrievable. You know, the, if you go down, if you visit that neighborhood, you will see, you know, a lot of pedestrians, a lot of people walking, walking strollers, walking dogs, and, you know, not much vehicular traffic. And then, you know, so you're going to be introducing large fire trucks, you know, into this neighborhood on a fairly regular basis, according to what the chief said, you know, at least, you know, every day during a six-week period, and then, you know, for the rest of the year, you know, two or three times a day. That's what he told the Conservation Commission. So that's going to be a big change for that neighborhood. And when, to build this road, you're going to have to take down a lot of trees, and you're going to have to improve the grade, you know, and I don't know, you know, the deed refers to a plan, and the plan labels this lot where they want to put this road as, you know, not a buildable lot, you know, to be reserved for drainage retention. So I don't know how they get around that, but that's what it says.
Would you say it's a restrictive covenant on the deed, or how would you describe that limitation?
The deed refers to the plan, and it's stated on the plan. This lot is labeled non-buildable, to be used as a drainage retention. If you need it, I can give you the citation.
I think one of the folks put in the letter, so I don't think we need to...
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Any other questions for the alderman? Thank you, Alderman Jettie.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that many people here support the comments. Just going forward, we would just ask if people not applaud or make other comments when people speak. Now I'll ask, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none? Is there anybody who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? If so, please come forward. I believe Mr. Johnson is first, but, you know, feel free to come forward, people can queue up if they wish, and if you wouldn't mind just, of course, stating your name and address for the record.
Thank you so much for introducing me. My name is Paula Johnson, I live at 15 Westbourne Drive. I just want, I'm curious if anybody had taken a walk-through Teak Drive to see the wetland in this wooded area. I guess you have, which would be great, because I went down there, I was asked to please come over there and take a look at that area. That area is a quiet neighborhood, you've got wetlands there, plus the fact, as I was going through the information, and they, they're not saying exactly whether or not there is endangered species, but I must say that there must be because they've listed it. And the eastern box turtle and the hog nose snake, there might be low access in that area, but we don't know that was in April. If there's, and they're listed in the state as an endangered species. So I would be cautious whether or not you should disrupt that area because of that. The other issues I have here is that when you're going to be bringing these big trucks down, the fire trucks, it's going to start off as slow, and then you're going to have a peak season, and the peak season is going to be basically in the nice weather. You're going to have the fumes from the diesel trucks, which is going to impede the neighborhood and the people walking. And the question becomes here, does it conform to the character of the neighborhood? No, it doesn't. It's non-conforming. This is a residential neighborhood, and you're asking to put a gate there to have fire trucks go through. It isn't even flat land, you have to grade the land, you're talking bridges. Now, do you put bridges in a residential neighborhood? I wouldn't. Would anybody like to be where they are now in their neighborhood, and then turn around one day and you see all this construction, your wooded area, your wetlands, your endangered species being dug up? So when you take a look at everything at the board, you have to take a look and to see if it's going to be conforming to the neighborhood. I think Alderman Jettie did an excellent job here tonight explaining what's going to happen with that neighborhood. And I don't think that Teak Drive is the right place. I asked the chief, and he said, "There is no other place." Well, Alderman Jettie talked about Northwest Boulevard, we have land out there, you know, that's 80 Northwest Boulevard where the Chinese bought that big building out there that everybody's talking about. But if there is land out there that's not going to disturb a neighborhood, I think this needs to be reassessed, and I think what needs to be done here is this needs not to be allowed to go through, that it should be stopped right now, and then in two weeks, most of these people are going to be back here again over DPW. This is insane. This is insanity what's happening in this city. And it's about time, if it's non-conforming, you need to deny. And the people in this audience, I know I'm not allowed to turn around and look and point because I got told the last time, but why do we have to come in time and time again to fight for our neighborhood that we've worked hard to pay for our homes because the city wants something? Well, who owns this city? It's everybody in this audience who's paid their taxes for how many years, and it's about time, deny, deny, deny this one, and on the 28th. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to come forward and speak?
Hi, my name's Janice Arkin, I live at 33 Teak Drive here in Nashua. And first of all, I'd like to thank Paula and the aldermen, they've said mostly what was really needing to be said, but I also would like to address the chief and tell you that...
If you just wouldn't mind addressing the board.
Sorry. Everybody in this room and everybody in Nashua appreciates the Nashua Fire Department, all the things they do, how they protect us, and how they take care of us, and agree that they need to have training. There's lots of jobs where training is necessary, and please, let's have the fire department have that, but not in a residential area. The chief mentioned something about the road on West Hall Street not being appropriate for their heavy equipment. Well, my question is Goslin Road, Teak Drive, Westgate Village, are those roads appropriate for frequent heavy vehicle traffic? And if they have to put some kind of special road off of Teak for all their vehicles, are they going to have to upgrade the roads that lead to that road also? So there's a lot of issues here, and one of them is April or the spring, that is reproduction period for animals, that is birthing time for animals. So we have deer, I mean, we have lots of animals in the woods behind our homes. So are we going to interfere with their reproduction, with how their numbers go? Is this going to ruin that for them too? My most important thing, I'm an older woman, so I don't have small children anymore, but I did when I lived on Teak Drive, and I've lived there for over forty years, that the little children should be free to be able to ride their little tricycles and their little scooters without worrying about vehicles coming and going, school buses, people with dogs, tons of people with pets walking on that street. It's just inappropriate, and it would make more sense if this was in an industrial area where noise, smell, vehicles would not interfere with the life of a resident in a nice, quiet neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? And once again, we really would ask that you refrain from clapping when people speak. Thank you. Sir?
Hi, good evening, Mike LaRocque, 22 Teak Drive, the author and sender of all these emails, pictures, looking right up my Ring Cam. It our view that's going to be from you, no further away from that wall behind you, it's going to be a forty-foot wide opening, twenty-foot of pavement. So respectfully, tonight, I don't want you to focus at all on us thinking that the Nashua Fire Department or DPW should have their ability to relocate. No issues. Sole issue is the consistency with the neighborhood of this project going forward. Quickly, just an anecdote of what happened today, UPS truck comes around the corner, a runner coming down the street, possibly with earbutts, couldn't hear, he's running his dog, dog goes that way, runner goes that way, truck goes that way. That's how it works on that street, that's how small that street is. You don't have room for two trucks to pass, side by each. So tonight, what we talked about with the Conservation Committee is NFD's stated goal right from the outset, their first meeting, was they need a second access point to access this new facility. And again, we have no problem with that. Doesn't work in the neighborhood. There's two access points already. You go in to the left of the scale house, go up and around, get you right to that spot. I've driven there, I've sat in that site in my truck. I've driven down the other side, I've driven it, sat in my truck. It's doable. It was mentioned that, well, they're a little... We talked about the deed. The deed's intent, it was attached to a plan. Have you looked at the plan? Have you actually seen the physical plan attached to the deed? Not a buildable lot for each of those two sites, the one abutting the Vernal Pool and the one that's moved 80 feet up the street, which puts it directly in front of my house, John's house, and one other house. And then several other houses can visibly see it from 100 yards away. So you're not, you're shifting the Vernal Pool. Those frogs, which we know are there, it's a pool. They're diverting with a culvert, just moving those frogs upstream when the water fills up up there. So not a buildable lot. What does that mean? We were told we're not building anything. Well, you are building. You're planning, you're grading, you're assessing, you're relocating, you're leveling trees. That's building. We talked about nowhere does it say, they said, it refers to homes. You can't build a home. Well, it doesn't say not a buildable lot. What if it said not a amendable lot? What would that mean? You can't do anything with it. And that's pretty much could be what the intent was of that plan being attached, that deed in the first place. Not a buildable lot. It says specifically on that plan for drainage retention area only, period. So for a special exception, that means something needs to be done that's not currently outside of the standards, correct? So it already fits the standards of the zoning board laws and rules and regulations. Leave it alone. We see more kids on bikes, people with dogs, kids in strollers, carriages, and deer in our front yard than we do cars in a day at times. It's not a place for this. We talked about the conservation getting involved because there is water. Of course, we know there's frogs. It's water, for gosh sakes. They're just diverting the problem up in front of our house by putting the roadway right straight across the street. No question. No need for that. Excuse me. Well, trying to turn my page here, papers are stuck. We had our grandchild down last week. My daughter's at the end of the driveway, not the street. Trucks come around that corner, cars come around that corner. It's that close. All right. Let me appeal to each of you as individuals tonight. We want to talk about relocation of the facility. We were told it's just simply going to be steel shipping containers, nothing dug into the ground, anything just laid out probably in a single height, can't turn around, I guess, single height location or construction. Perfect for the Northwest Boulevard. We suggested the Gilson Road landfill site out there. It's a vast expanse. If you've seen it, or not seen it, take a look at it. Be perfect. Water surrounds it, homes surround it. Water's tested periodically. They're not digging. It's going to disturb any of the compaction of waste from the older days. If you're familiar with that property, perfect site for it. Palatea Pig Farm, 500 yards towards Nashua from the Conant Road Fire Station, Main Dunsborough Road Fire Station, Conant Road. Be perfect. Cut it right into that wooded area. No one even know you're in there. Tied in with the DPW now, which was a surprise to us as of this week, creates this whole other bailiwick of problems. Now we're talking about snowplows, tractor trailer trucks, dump trucks, garbage trucks. What if they're full doing their roots? We've got a pin code. We're going to go right up there into the landfill, dump our dump, dump our trash. That's what it's going to become. No one can promise us that it won't. You understand that. Everybody knows that. So the usage, which went from 30 days maybe per year, which we have to look at at 365, now we're up to four or five days a week times two departments. Doesn't make sense. Wildlife?
You are at your five-minute limit if you just want to wrap up quickly.
Okay, thank you very much. He's left, Attorney Jettie, Ward Five Alderman. He's done a lot for us over the years. We appreciate his service and his comments here, supporting us tonight. I'd also like to say, if people here do not know, or they do know Paula Johnson, she's been so diligent, such a workhorse, to help us in this fight.
Thank you.
She needs to be listened to. She knows.
Are there any questions from the board for the speaker? All right. Thank you for your comments, sir.
Okay. You can all assure me, you've all read the memos and seen the pictures.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Sir?
Hello, my name is Joseph. Is this working?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Joseph Cole and I was looking online at the State Resources for Cultural and Natural Resources and noted that, noticed that the plotted area, because I'm seeing.
Oh, I do, yeah, you are. Would you mind stating your address, your name?
For Dolphin Circle. I live.
Thank you.
In a Windsor Pond behind the Teak-Goslin area. So Goslin is my route out.
Sorry to interrupt your flow.
So I was looking online for the Department of Cultural and Natural Resources and it turns out that the area, Vernal Pool plus the area they're trying to put the road through is, has a wildlife action plan that I could not actually find. It just happened to be recorded to be secure enough because of how the deed worked, that they were given special consideration by the state conservation units, which I'm assuming the mister down there would actually know. But I do not, I could not find the wildlife action plan for the endangered species. I could not find any of the resources for what the state was planning for this region because the deed being a protected, do not build region means that they were like, well, if we've got this wildlife area, what are we going to conserve here? And so they're like, if there's already conservation because of the deed, they're just wanting to monitor that as well. It's like, I could not find that resources. And so I'm like, how are those plans being factored into the plans for the road? Because there's multiple groups having an interest in the roads not being there and the area being, staying the way it is. Thank you for your consideration.
Absolutely. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Brody Arantes from 3 Gilroy Lane. There are a few things that I would like to touch on. First thing is, I don't think anyone here is against the training, right? We all know that the fire department needs training. We're all aware of that. We all appreciate all the work that they do and that was never up for discussion, right? We all understand that. There are quite a few things with the application itself that have changed quite a bit, quite drastically, actually. And when it was brought up, the cost effectiveness of the project between extending the line, the extra 2,000, I think it's like 2.5, 2.5,000 feet, to going through, I mean, down there, you, when you look at the grade, it goes down for about 10 feet and it goes up for about probably 50 feet rock, solid rock, right? And these trucks are going to, so to build this road there, you're going to have to build two bridges, that is in the plan. And so two bridges, the gate, plus going up that 50-foot ridge. And it's, it's kind of hard to understand how financially it makes more sense to do that than to extend the line and add the pump if needed even. We don't even know if we need that. There's no, there are no assessments besides what they're saying. There are no financial assessments. We don't know how much this is going to cost. There are no cost assessments besides this one, actually, there's zero cost assessments. We don't know what this is going to cost. The other entrance that has been built for the Department of Public Works could be used, right? I think even if the road is narrow, it would be probably cheaper also to widen the road a little bit. That road is already built for the trucks from the city to go through. And it would definitely cost a lot less. I don't have the numbers. They also don't have the numbers. They're making up the fact that it's more cost effective and no one knows that. The other thing is, you know, even his own person that he brought with him with the environmental assessment was mentioning issues that he, that he found there with the Vernal Pool and that is needed, the additional protection that is required, that they don't even know the extent of the requirement. We know that they don't have the money to do any additional work because they put in their application that they don't, they don't even have funds to do any kind of work besides spreading some seed mix. And that is the extent of the work that they're going to do to help with the, with the impact on the area. So it's hard to understand how they're going to have extra money to actually put into actually making the area is safe and that they're not, you know, destroying the environment for all the animals that were mentioned before, including the endangered species that are possibly in the area that were mentioned in the report. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Any questions for the speaker? Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Hello. My name's John Collins. I live at 20 Teak Drive, right across from where this road is going to go. So it's been very frustrating trying to get the word out about this road. Notification of this project has been very poor, actually. I don't know exactly who's receiving postal notifications of this project, but there would be at least three times the number of people here if the proper notifications had gone out to the right people who are involved in this, are going to be affected by this project. I know we tried to get the word out to Westgate, which is connected. We used some Facebook just in the last day and this is the number of people we have here today. So if we had more time for notification to people, we'd have much more people here in opposition to this. So that's one of the frustrations we've had and we've had to pick up the slack on notifying the neighborhood of this, which is a big concern. It seems like it was almost meant to keep this very hush-hush and kind of ram this So, let's see. So we've been busy trying to collect information about this and notify people of this project. And everybody we seem to run into did not know about this. So, so this is going to increase large truck traffic in our area. And it's, if you've gone down and looked, there are two tight turns that these 50-foot trucks are going to have to make to get up there. And then they're going to climb a big steep hill. There's also a lot of ledge rock back there, which will, I would assume, require blasting to be done to get through to create this road. So costs are a big, big part of this. They seem to think that a shorter distance will be more cost effective. But cutting a 40-foot wide, 1,000-foot road through the woods, through actually the natural barrier between us and the landfill, and all the work that needs to be put in there, seems like it's going to be a lot more costly than just paving a road through the main entrance of the landfill, putting water underneath it. And that road's already there, it just needs to be paved. Dump trucks drive on that road all the time. I don't see why fire trucks would have an issue driving back there. So, these are some of the issues that I've had. I sent it to the questions. Are we going to go over the questions to, to the, there was a question, the zb@nashua.gov? They said to send it questions, so you could, I guess, review those, but.
If you're speaking to the emails that were sent in.
Yes.
We have several of them. We're not going to read through them all, but the board has received them, has reviewed them, and we will note them for the, they will be a part of the record.
Super. Thank you. So yes, this is a residential area as well. A lot of walkers and like Mike had said, there are delivery trucks down there all the time. We, you know, sometimes witness almost accidents, almost issues with walkers, dogs, strollers. So the addition of large trucks waiting at a gated road is going to be, add a lot more liability to this area. And there is possibility that, you know, there could be lawsuits if anything happens due to the fire engines coming into this road.
And you are at time, sir, so if you wouldn't mind wrapping up.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Good evening. Justin Gersonfield, 79 Gilson Road. And just echoing some of the other comments that have already been made, but kind of specifying that walking in that neighborhood, it is not the place for large vehicles. It is a very quiet street. It is not like the road that I live on, on Gilson Road, where there are lots of traffic and it is a more major road, I would say. You've got the wetlands that are there. I live right by some wetlands and I would hate to see it destroyed for something that we could look at a different location for. I've seen so many of the residents in Ward Five already have to make so many compromises when it comes to the Four Hills location with the DPW and having to look at the other things that are going around in that area. And when we look as far as notifications go, I want us to keep in mind that we send these notifications to people and we send them certified mail, which is great, but then if we're not home because we're at work, we have to go to a different city to pick up these notifications. Does everybody realize that? That if we're not home, we have to go to Hudson to pick up our notifications because we're not home to collect them? And for people that are working full-time or are picking up kids or not around, we have to take time off our jobs. If we're an hourly employee, we have to take loss of pay to go and pick up these notifications. And so from what I've heard from a lot of people in this neighborhood is that it really feels like this has just been pushed on them, that there's no choice and that they almost feel like it's not even worth fighting for because yet again, the city is just going to get what they want and push it through. And I really want you to have heard everything that has been said tonight because we have options and there are lots of different things that we can do to do right by our neighbors. Because that's what all of these residents are, are our neighbors. They are people that we are going to see every day and we have to make sure that we are listening to the voices of everyone that is around us and listening to all of the facts that have been said. And so I don't need to stand here and repeat them. Alderman Jettie did a fantastic job of laying them out for us as well as did the other people before us, but I wanted to make those, those points clear as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? All right, be free to take a seat. Anybody else would like to speak?
Good evening. I'm John Ozilius. Live at 35 Teak Drive. I'll be very brief. One thing I, we looked, went through this application in detail. The one thing that's covered in great detail is the wetlands and this road that's going to go through. There's very little in there about what it's going to do to impact the neighborhood. There's very little, if nothing, about the effect of these trucks on the streets, about the fact that part of these roads have sidewalks, but many of these roads do not have any sidewalks. There's nothing in there about the effect on the neighborhood. Everything is about the effect on the wetlands and how it's cost effective. So I just wanted to point out that we as residents would like to know at minimum more about how this would affect the neighborhood as opposed to just how it affects the city and how it would affect those wilderness areas. So that's really what I wanted to get to.
Thank you. Questions?
Good evening. My name is Michael Ave. I live at 15 Hazel Avenue and I want to address some of the other issues that I've already talked about. One point I would like to.
Sir, sir.
Obviously, I'm going to object to the.
You need to speak into the microphone, though.
In a special case, I'm objecting to that, but I understand, it's my understanding that for them to approve, for them to have this approved, they need to apply for a, essentially a wetlands permit to build on wetlands. And I was wondering if the, if the board has had any access to any permits that they have applied for. I know there are certain wetland standards that have to be met before you can grant them access to this special use code. And have you had a chance to? access to this special use code, and have you had a chance to review that and discuss that with them with regard to meeting all the requirements of that special use code?
So the only application before the board is for a special exception under the zoning ordinance? And under the ordinance, we, for a wetlands-related special exception, we do have input from the Conservation Commission. That's all before us. We have nothing to do with any other permits or approvals that may be required.
But as the proposing activity, are they not supposed to address the wetland standards that are outlined in their 190-15-14?
In the ordinance, yes.
So have they addressed that? I mean, the public has no idea that those items have been addressed, and we'd like to know whether or not those items have been addressed, because they go to many of the concerns we have about some of the wetlands here.
So all of that information is included in the application that was filed before the board and is available to the public. You can access that on the city's website, if you haven't had the chance to take a look.
Okay. All right. So, and that also includes any, any reports or findings from the New Hampshire Fish and Game and the Department of Environmental Services? Is that correct?
The applicants have filled out an application that addresses the criteria that this, that this board has to consider.
Okay. And have you had a chance to, okay, I'll stop there. So, anyway...
Thank you.
Those are my concerns, that all the required requirements for the special use exception have been met or are being met.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions from the board? Thank you.
My name is Leigh Atkins. I live in Westgate Village, and I'm also on the Board of Directors. I would just like to speak to, first off...
Excuse me. Could you still state your actual address?
Oh, I'm sorry. 12 Valencia Drive.
Thank you.
Looking at the proposal, there's been nothing mentioned about traffic. There hasn't been any traffic studies mentioned. The only access would come up Westgate Crossing. On both sides of that road are Westgate Village community property. Tiny bit of sidewalk, more towards the main road. No sidewalks other than that. Children use those streets to walk to the bus. Trucks coming up there would be a safety hazard. That's my main concern. The other thing I wanted to address was, in regards to a request for a special exception, there's criteria that they must meet. The first one I've identified, it's phrased as cannot be avoided. In other words, is there another option? There are. The second criteria was least damaging route. I don't believe this is. The third, necessary encroachment. The benefits don't outweigh, the, I'm sorry, the negative outcomes don't outweigh the benefits. Are there any significant impacts? I believe there are. The study of the wetlands and the wildlife is inconclusive. And it also fails the buffer protections, State Statute 190-112, 114. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Please come forward.
My name is Kristen Pottister. I'm at 10 Laredo. I am also on the HOA for Westgate. I'm the, Leigh is our president, and I'm the vice president. So as stated by John, I believe it was, we were not notified about this until one of the residents of Teak notified us last minute yesterday. That's not on him. Westgate's an association. We have a management company. We were not contacted. That's not okay. You're using our road to get to Teak, to get to Goslin. That's a huge issue. We have damaged sidewalks as it is. As I said, Teak doesn't have sidewalk, there's not sidewalks there. I went down that road, there was a moving truck that happened to be coming by. I, in a car, a sedan, had to swerve to get out of the way, never mind a fire engine. Never mind this DPW situation where they say, oh, we won't let them. Who's going to guarantee that? Couple other things. Property values. I wouldn't have moved where I moved if it was a freeway like this. Other people have stated that in their posts that you have documentation on. Again, butters weren't notified. The sign that is now in front of where they want to put this road, I was informed by one of the neighbors was dug out of the woods. It wasn't even put in plain sight for the residents to see. Adam Flore claims this is a low-traffic generator. The chief has gone back and forth, said various different things. The number keeps changing, as Alderman said. As the chief said in his own words, "The closest location for training is Concord." What does that say? That means everyone who's going to Concord, if we're closer, they're coming here. More traffic, more safety issues. The habitat study states minimal impact, clearly not the case. The study started, it's dated in your documents, is January 6, 2024. That's almost two years ago. And it also clearly states that the, the survey was difficult to complete, and there are likely additional species not present, I'm sorry, there are additional species likely present that were not recorded in the report. Their own report states that. So they don't even know the extent of the impact on the habitants of this. And as I stated, this burnable pool already has damage to it. One of the things that I haven't heard mentioned is this plan's also calling for utility poles and wires to be constructed. Again, more disturbance, more construction. The chief stated he's always been respectful of the neighbors, never had any problems. Chief, I ask you, these are your neighbors. Are you respecting them? Because we don't feel respected. This is a community. This is where we live. Please, follow your own words, respect your neighbors, and find a, find a better solution. My daughter's normally in bed. I'm making her stay up. I'm the one with the baby back there, because it's important. It's important for her future. It's important for all the kids in these neighborhoods. The Conservation Commission, the, I forget the gentleman's name who did this, it was stated that they want additional protections that haven't even been looked into. And he also stated there's more wetland impact than was his original, in the original plan. So I just ask, please, this is a residential neighborhood. There's other alternatives. I mean, Alderman, Alderman Jettie gave you properties. I mean, look at even, I don't, obviously, the city doesn't own this, but look at like where Building 19 was, up on Amherst Street. That's a huge vacant lot, if the city wanted to get it. It's a safe area, it's a, it's a commercial area. They already have two entrances on the main road. They can, you know, deal with those. But again, we appreciate the fire department, we appreciate the training, we want them trained, we appreciate them coming to our need. We just would appreciate if they would consider what they're doing to their, to their neighbors. Thank you.
Questions from the board? Mr. Shaw?
Sure.
Can you clarify whether Westgate Crossing and even just all the roadways in Westgate are considered private, or are they all public right-ofways?
Some of them, I believe, are private, and Leigh would be a good person to speak to that, who, the person who is, the woman who is here before me, because I believe the townhomes, which would be like your redwood circle, are privately plowed. So it's a, it's a mixed bag. But, I mean, you hear it. I would, I wouldn't have moved there. I mean, you hear, the fire department uses Westgate as a cut-through as it is sometimes because there's a station on one end. But you, you, you hear the, you hear the DPW trucks. You hear, when, just on trash day. I mean, it's, you're talking a lot more noise, a lot more pollution, a lot more dangers for children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Dan Rogers. I'm at 4 Hazel Avenue. For 41 years, I've lived within that neighborhood. Everybody you're seeing within this road, I've, I guarantee you have to probably live slightly longer than I have. Again, and we've always heard for tonight, and I'm being more realistic about it, because I'm not going to repeat everything for it, but what I will state is one thing, and the Alderman said tonight, and I believe it's something to be noticed. Northwestern Boulevard. I used to work where the Chinese company, where the Chinese company has now, has now bought, as Delta Education. It's a huge property area. There's access roads very easily. There are other industrial buildings also into it as well. So I believe, especially I believe as well to the fire department, they could really have a benefit of having their own property to be there, to develop it, to grow. And, and I believe also as well, as a benefit to the city of Nashua, to have them, to invite Merrimack, Hollis, Tingsborough, many other truckers, and many other fire departments to use that facility, so we could have revenue that can grow, that can grow into the city. But it will be still within Northwestern Boulevard area, because all they have to do is just go up the highway, take Amherst Street, and take that right. They're not going to disturb anybody. They don't have to pave anything new. The only thing they have to do is only just to, because, because right now, the only thing that's over there is a little oval area. They could easily have the biggest access just to open one single road, and they could have that for years and years to come, because as he once said, over 40 years. To him, the Four, the Four Hills have been a relationship for those many years. And like I said, it was never a disturbance to us then, and it's never been a disturbance at least to this day, until this may happen. Many years ago, my father, before he passed, fought against the city about that cell phone tower. Many of the residents signed that for many years, but it still happened nonetheless. So for this, I truly believe that we should always look into more options, as they said, because it is a residential area. But I truly believe that easily, within that property, especially that right of Northwestern Boulevard, it'll be the least amount of money to put into. It's the easiest access point, and it'll still be within the city, because I would like the city to grow. I would like for it to have the benefits, to work with its neighbors that we have within New Hampshire, even with Massachusetts, to bring some more revenue to the city. So as the Alderman once said, I truly believe that we have more open options, but I truly believe that could be your best option to have, to be a Northwestern. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Good evening. Rich poor. I live on 26 Goslin Road. I have 118-foot of frontage where Hazel and DeSeks Goslin. And my concern would be that I don't think I would be able to park a car in front of my, in front of my house, and my neighbor, Michael, across the street on Hazel and Goslin. If we both parked cars there, I'm not sure how you would get a fire truck past those two cars, just, I don't think there's enough space, but that's, that's my main observation. So that would be, if you're telling me you can't park in front of your house anymore because it would cause one of us to have to not park in front of our houses, then that would be a hardship to us.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Heather Shaves. I'm 18 Twilight Drive, which is actually on the backside of this. I've been there for 20 years. Our neighborhood specifically, and interestingly, was not notified. The only people that were notified on, on our street, which is on the backside of the dump, is the people whose property is abutted. So if your backyard was the dump, then you got notified. If you were across the street from that, we did not get notified. So the only way that I got notified is by some of the people here, that I've been walking my dogs for 20 years now, five days a week, everybody I'm sure sees me. But more importantly, this is a really, really important area for kids. I mean, I have my 13-year-old son here. What 13-year-old kid comes to a planning board zoning meeting? I mean, he's here, and he, his friends wanted to come, because this is where they ride. They ride their electric bikes, they ride their scooters, they ride their skateboards. I mean, this is a neighborhood for kids. Our kids don't cross over Main Dunstable Road, because it's a main road. So this is their neighborhood. They ride around there, they ride up Westgate, because there isn't a lot of traffic. And my other concern is about the traffic coming into Westgate and going out Westgate on the West Hollis side. I mean, I don't know if you guys do that on a regular basis. It's a nightmare to get in and out of there as it is. Has anybody done a traffic study on the, on the, what the effects are going to be of that? I mean, it's got worse on Main Dunstable Road when they put the middle school in. You know, I used to be able to pull out of Acacia and not barely even have to look. Now I can sometimes sit there for three minutes before I'm able to even pull out. So I'm just concerned about the traffic ramifications as well. But most importantly, I'm just here for my kid and for all of the kids in the neighborhood who ride around, walk around, people that walk their dogs, people with strollers. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
It's not, it's just a comment, so she doesn't have to come back, but I just would like to kind of note, because a number of people have brought this up now, and Mr. Falk can further comment, but our city ordinance requires a certain level of notification, and that is of direct abutting properties. And that's all that is required, and that is all that is normally done for any application that comes through the city. So I understand people are frustrated and all, and think that there should be greater notification, but what the city does is follows that practice. And so, yes, those, those ones, I think, on Twilight, that abut the landfill property would have gotten notified, and yes, anybody on the other side, not directly abutting, wouldn't get notified. That's just the way it works, and I just, that's, that's standard practice. There's no, no special thing being done or not done in this case of this application. It's the common, regular practice. So I just want to make that clear, because, again, it's come up a number of times, and I just, hopefully it will help set that record straight for folks.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Sir?
Hi. Last but not least, I think, George Sturgeon, 15 Cimarron Drive, so that's in Westgate Village. I'm not going to repeat a lot of stuff. I agree with all of the comments. I think you've got enough already to deny this. Really, on, the key point would be Item 5, effect of the neighborhood, traffic, safety, degradation of the neighborhood. For me, you've got this application, then you've got the one postponed on the 28th, which is DPW, which is asking for the same access for their purposes. So you've got two things, it's really one. It's one access into the, into the landfill for two purposes. This is a much minor traffic impact. When the DPW comes along on the 28th, it amplifies this, I don't know, 10x because of that extra vehicle traffic. More safety concerns. The DPW's in there, they're going to, excuse me, have a garage service their vehicles.
Sir, if I may, we're not speaking about the DPW facility this evening?
I understood. This alone should be denied. When that comes along, it makes it worse. That's my only point there. The city is spending a lot of money on a design concept for the new, new garage. For me, the access here, and for them, should be from the landfill, no other access point needed, and it should be encompassed in that design study. So there's really no need for this. Should be addressed there. If a neighborhood needs to be impacted for this, rather than what they're requesting here, you've got Tresselbrook. You've got the landfill right here. Tresselbrook's got, what, 10,000 feet maybe of road going in. All the residences over here, the landfill's there. If you want to bother a neighborhood, go up that road and cut into the landfill for this purpose, and the DPW purpose if they want. So there's plenty of options, and I just think this is a ridiculous request, coupled with the one coming on the 28th, to bother this neighborhood, to impact this neighborhood. Never mind the wetlands and all the other things that have come up. So I think you've got ample grounds to deny it. I hope you deny it, and I hope you don't table it. Let's make a decision, deny it. Deny this app, so that hopefully the one on the 28th just gets canceled.
Questions from the board? Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? I do want to note, as I did earlier, that we have received several communications. I'm not going to read through them all... I'm not going to read through them all. Some of them are rather lengthy. But I would like to acknowledge, we did receive multiple communications from Mike LaRocque in opposition. We received letters of opposition from Patrick Lessard, Janice Arkand, again, Mike LaRocque, Joan Collins, Donna Bushi, Michael Lav or Lave, Robert Hardman, Daryl Spildary, I may have said that incorrectly. I'm sure I did. Peter and Renee Colgaropoulos, Alexander Papadias, Ross Stowe, and I believe, this is, John Orzalius and Mary Ann Howell, and Mike LaRocque, Patrick Lessard, and I believe that's all of them. If somebody did send a letter and I failed to acknowledge it, forgive me, there are a number of them. So I might have overlooked one, but they are all in the package. I also will note that I did receive a phone call from Margaret... Oh, now I'm forgetting her name. I have it written down. Let me get that. Lorette, who I believe could not be here this evening. So, again, we have everybody's communications. As part of... Mr. Shaw?
In the one, just, there are a few other names I have right here in front of me.
Oh, please.
Lisa Tala, Emma Matthew and Winston Morrissey, Rodi Arantes. I think that, those are the extras that I know I had here, and I think that might do it.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. So with that, I'm going to invite the applicant to come back to the podium. And you do have up to five minutes for rebuttal, if you wish. And Chief, that's probably you. Unless your wetland scientist wants to come up also.
Good evening. Steve Buxton, Fire Chief. So I want to start by pointing out that we had multiple meetings with the neighbors on Teak Drive. And as a fire department, we worked to engage them early on and to provide them with as much information as we had available to us. We certainly understand that they may not be supportive of this project. However, we found significant value in their feedback, and we have worked to include much of that in our proposals, as we presented through Brendan in the permitting process. So if I understand the process correctly, tonight you'll be voting on the, our ability to gain access through the wetlands impact. I wanted to address a couple of things that Alderman Jettie said. The garage placement of the DPW is not driving this. The growth of the fire department, the growth of our community, is truly the driver. Yeah, we are in close proximity to each other over there. There are some days where we're tripping over each other, but we could exist with the addition of the garage over there. But we would not be able to expand to meet the needs of our community as we train into the future. This new site gives us the ability to expand some at that point in time. The land that has been discussed, you know, it's very easy to point to different areas of the city and say that, well, this would fit better there or over there. Gilson Road site, that is state-owned property. The city actually owns the building. The state owns the property. Up on Northwest Boulevard, a lot of that is owned by the Airport Authority, but with FAA funds, and when you utilize that land, you have to repay those funds back to the federal government. So it's not as easy of a transition as it may seem at face value. All of our roadways within the city of Nashua are paved, and they're constructed to meet certain standards, to support our apparatus, and large trucks that travel up and down the roads every day. We travel around the city every day in much tighter quarters than we do that are in place over there in Westgate Village and Antique Drive. The roadway within the landfill, at best, you might be able to get that classified as a Class Six road, at best. And to improve it, to meet the needs of apparatus, to be able to traverse that around the, through the year, is going to have very significant wetland impacts. And that's why we, we are trying to go the route we are. Oh, the, one, one of the speakers did point out that they thought that we would be bringing power in through this roadway. I just want to point out that the power is already available for us out at the cell tower site. So we'll be grabbing it from there. There will not be utility poles and wires brought in from Teak Drive. And I believe the traffic in this area does not rise to the level that a traffic study would be warranted. But you may have more information on that. I think that might be up at the planning board or something. So those are basically the comments that I have at this point in time. Brendan is available, if you need him to give more high-level, technical, wetlands-impact-type information.
Questions from the board? Mr. Boucher?
Just a very simple question, Chief Buxton. When it comes to the pedestrian safety, how do, how do, how do your crews interact when they're driving through the city, when they're seeing kids and play and stuff? What are they doing, or what are they, if it's not an emergency? How do they handle that?
We always yield to pedestrians. Kids are attracted to fire trucks. When we are in residential neighborhoods, it's backed way down. And obviously, knowing this neighborhood and knowing the sensitivity of the issue, you know, we have a Glance software that allows us traffic preemption abilities throughout the city. One of the other things that gives us is we have the ability to monitor the speeds of all of our apparatus from the second they pull out of a building. So any complaints, stuff like that, we can certainly monitor and see exactly how fast apparatus are going, and deal with the issue and take corrective actions.
So again, I assume that, that your crews will take extra care when they drive through neighborhoods like this and others?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make, you know, make sure that that was clear.
Yep. Thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
I wanted to ask about a couple of other things that were brought up. And then I do think I want to talk to the wildlife specialist. There, there's been the information presented about the non-buildable lot aspect. What can you say to that?
I can't really speak to that. That's not my area of expertise. I don't know if Dan Hudson might be able to offer you some information on that or not.
Thank you, Dan Hudson, City Engineer. So I'm not an attorney, but, and I don't know exactly what was intended. What's written on the plan is that it's for, you know, the, the water retainage and treatment efforts, right? So those features of this, of this area, we're retaining. We're not, we're not, we're not going away from that. Basically, it's doing the same thing. In my thirty years of engineering practice, I've always understood a non-buildable lot to be one that you couldn't put a structure on. It couldn't, couldn't become a buildable house lot, is my, has been my general understanding of a non-buildable lot. I've never understood it to mean that you couldn't have a driveway or do any of the other things that are contemplated.
Actually, just to follow up on that part of things, and then I'm going to have another different question. So, but, but the, the training structure, the training facility is going to be a structure, obviously not an inhabitable or, or, or home, but it will be a structure that's built. So is that in the, the, the part of the lot that's, that's in question here? Or is, is what you've spoken to, I don't know of how the lot is divided up. And so is it more, you know, just where the wetlands are? That's, that's one thing. But where the actual training structure is, that's actually not the issue?
That's a good point. Yeah. No, the training structure will be constructed on the landfill property proper, which is, you know, we can build structures on that property. There's a couple smaller lots that were subdivided as part of that subdivision. There's a right-of-way that was reserved to enter into the property. So it was always intended that we might need an access into the property someday. But that right-of-way, unfortunately, is right smack dab where the vernal pool is. So it's not an appropriate location for, for access into the property. But, but no, the, the non-buildable references to a parcel that abuts Teak Drive, that will be passing through with the driveway.
Yeah, and quite frankly, probably when that was put together, there probably wasn't concern about filling in a vernal pool, you know, just the way things were at the timeframe. But my other question, and I was going to ask the chief, but I think you'd be the more appropriate one to answer. He already spoke to this a bit, but the, the question about city streets and the amount of truck traffic, so, and I understand and appreciate that, that, you know, all the, all the roadways have to be built to, to meet the standards, to accommodate, you know, the emergency vehicles, et cetera. But generally, like our arterial roadways and the greater trafficked roadways are, I think, built to a different standard as well. But my, what I'm really getting at is, a residential neighborhood, I would think the calculations would be basically built around essentially a much more limited usage of basically vehicles like fire trucks or, you know, dump trucks or other really heavy-duty equipment. And what's being proposed is a more regular flow of fire trucks through these roadways than would normally be on these kind of residential roads. So are they still going to actually withstand the much greater kind of usage of the heavy equipment? Or is that just going to ultimately remain to be seen? And we might have to be doing maybe rebuilding of those roads sooner than we normally would?
So, yeah, the, the, all the streets are constructed to accommodate the vehicles we would expect, trash pickup. You know, those are pretty heavy vehicles. Fire trucks need to go everywhere in the city as well. So, so, yeah, they're, it's suitable for that type of activity. And there's been a lot of discussion about how big this impact's going to be with the fire vehicles. I mean, what the chief has described to me is very minimal use. Actually, I can't think of a, a use where there would be less access to a property than what's being proposed. So although there are going to be some heavy vehicles, the amount of traffic would be less than almost anything else that I could, that I could conceive of on that site. So I don't view it as a high-traffic issue. Fire trucks have multiple axles. That distributes the load of the truck. So it really, in a road, in the, in the longevity of the road, is kind of driven by the number of axles and axle loading. So if you have a big vehicle, lots of axles, it's not, it doesn't mean that it's impacting the road much more than, say, a two-axle truck that's, you know, a box truck or something like that. So it's, you know, the heavier, obviously, the heavier the vehicle, the more frequent use of a heavy vehicle, that tends to degrade the roads faster. So it means we have to repave those roads more frequently. And that's true for arterials. Aterials typically are a thicker pavement than, than residential streets. But again, for what's proposed here, I have no concerns about the, the structure of this street being suitable for this use.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the...
I did have to follow up on the wet, with the wetland scientist, or if we wanted...
Let's just make sure that there's no more questions for the chief. Any other questions for the chief? If not, if you wouldn't mind asking your wetland scientist to come forward.
So there was definitely some of the testimony with concern or opposition who was speaking to the endangered species and that part of things. Can you talk a little bit more about that and maybe try to help clarify some of that for us?
Yes. So I think that kind of shows up in, in a couple of related but separate processes. One would be the standards which are required under Nashua ordinances. And we do believe we've addressed those concerns. I think that's reflected by the Conservation Commission's recommendations. Related processes to the Nashua applications, of course, are those to the state of New Hampshire. And a lot of the same principles are mirrored in those two, including the wildlife concerns. They actually get a lot more attention at the state level. There's a pretty robust review process now that we're required to go through with fishing game. It's really more, more of a one-case-specific analysis that they do. And we're in the process of incorporating some of their comments. I mentioned a few of them in my, in my initial testimony. But those will, those conditions, which will get incorporated into the state permits, will specifically deal with things like timing of the work to have the least impact, signage at the entrance to the road, noting the potential presence of endangered species. There will be notes relative to identifying what those species are on the, on the plans, so that they can, at least during the work or any time thereafter, they can, operational personnel can refer to those. And there's additional information on who to contact for that. So there is probably a few more. We're, we're in the process of going through those now. But they all serve to bolster, I would say, what the Nashua requirements are. So it, it is an issue, and it's one that's been, is being actively addressed and comprehensively.
Okay. Thank you. And then the other thing was, there, there was, it was this topic of the so-called Wildlife Action Plan. Are you familiar with that, or have any, have you seen that or know anything about that?
Yeah, there's, the Wildlife Action Plan is a sort of an expansive document, which covers a lot of different things, from conservation of known habitats of very special, rare species and such, down to very generalized areas, which they've identified. It's basically produced through co-occurrence analysis, where they would, classic GIS, they'd lay open space with records of known species, with proximity to houses and other infrastructure. And you come up with these areas, I believe this is what the gentleman was referring to. There is a map, the so-called green and magenta areas, which have been identified by that data analysis as areas where there are potentially wildlife concerns. It doesn't mean that they, there is a protected area, or even that there is a known species there in that area. In this case, there is a rather large area identified on those maps. And I could tell you, it's almost certainly related to the landfill itself, which maybe somewhat paradoxically to some people, supports some excellent grassland habitat. So the whole entire landfill property is shaded green, which is, it was the highest-ranked habitat in the region, and I believe it's for that purpose. They have grassland management plans for certain bird species.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board?
I have another question, but I believe for either Chief Buxton or City Engineer.
Mr. Shaw?
That's, there was also, this was noted, as far as bridges being built for the access road. And can, are there actually bridges, or is there just actually maybe essentially topography being done to level out?
Yeah, well, Dan, Dan can weigh in. So there are, there aren't bridges being built. This is a, a fill profile. And for the crossing, which is important for wildlife, as I mentioned, a very large culvert's being used, far exceeding what would be required just for the hydrology that's going to need to pass through there. The point of that is to encourage wildlife passage for the vulnerable species.
Thank you.
Just further, a bridge, per definition, is a span of ten feet or greater. And our largest pipe in this is a forty-eight-inch culvert. So we're not, we're not in the realm of a, you know, a traditional bridge description.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have one question. For the overall project, is an alteration of terrain permit required?
Not as far as I'm aware, but Mr. Hudson might have a more comprehensive answer.
The answer is, no, we're not exceeding the hundred thousand square foot of impact area which would be required, or which would trigger that permitting regime.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? If not, as I noted earlier, one person who spoke in opposition to, or is in opposition, I should say, to, to the application, can come forward to have, you'll have your last words. words, give a wrap-up. That's up to five minutes. Obviously, there's a lot of folks who have an interest in this, so typically what we do is we give you the opportunity to chat amongst yourselves. So in order to do that, I'm going to suggest that we take a 10-minute recess, and when we come back, hopefully you guys will have identified someone to speak on everyone's behalf.
Do we have?
Do we need 10 minutes? Would you people like 10 minutes, or would you mind if I do this?
If you're the one, and, and people are okay with that, that's fine. All right, go for it.
I'm going to read this quicker than I typically would. Please indulge me a minute extra if I need a minute, there's so much to respond to. First of all, I'm not worried about them looking out for kids coming around a corner. I'm worried about the guys coming down the street running stop signs into the truck. Okay, let me find my sheet here. I'm going to take a little bit of a different tact on this tonight. Faith needs action. Tonight's members took your place on this board having a faith, a belief, a guiding source, in this case zoning standards. Normal practice is written standards and rules, a belief that you can help, that you can make things better. Faith keeps things working properly, consistency, relevance to how zoning laws and regulations are applied, assuring conformity, comparability, consistency with any project. You took an oath, I suspect, when you joined the board pledging your allegiance to this faith, in this case, the zoning laws. What equally important is action. Action is needed to have faith. Without action, you don't have faith. Action is what you need to do or have done to live up to that. Standards, published guidelines and rules. Example, look at this particular zoning issue. Right now, visualize, standing in front of my house you've seen the pictures from, our small neighborhood street, that's your faith, your belief, is you thinking what you really feel about the issue guided by those standards. And you're saying to yourself, is this the spot for this access road? Is this common sense? Does this project placed here in this street make sense? And you think no to yourself. That's your faith, and you should think no. You know what's right based on your feelings, you trust what's right, but within a group there's often pressure implied or explicit to go against that faith. To stick with a group, to vote against what you know, to feel and be right based on your beliefs, not the groups, meaning you're not taking your action that you believe in, not using the action is wrong. And when one doesn't take that, what good's your faith? Your standards, the rules, throw them out. There are many reasons for not going with pressure, having it veer from, and not taking the action you know to feel to be right. Lastly, show of hands, please, for those who do not perform a site visit. Everybody's been to the site, appreciate that. Thank you very much, I challenged you to do so in one of my letters, thank you. If so, I would have asked you to recuse yourself from not having done your due diligence or the action it takes before you can make a vote based on that faith. So tonight, before you vote, visualize again our small neighborhood, us as impacted residents, a group you also chose to represent when you took your position on this board, versus the commercialized West Hollis Street landfill entrance. You joined the board, I suspect, for just that reason, to do what's right for the community, its neighbors and its residents, not just for a city project. Does that make sense to you? You know it doesn't. Vote no. You're a member of a board sworn to protect people and property from a product that does not conform, that is neither compatible nor consistent with the character of the neighborhood, will have a negative impact on immediate surrounding areas, will negatively impact all that we hold, excuse me, and purport to be and defend wildlife, quality of life, wetlands, protection and the people. This project will do all of that. Common sense is if a project requires a special exception, then it's a project that wasn't zoned for that intended use in the first place. There's no more clear of a case for dial of this special exception. In closing, you have your faith, keep it. Now use the action, to take that obvious action and deny this approval in the special It's clearly not right for this commercial product to be inserted into and onto our quiet family neighborhood and residential-filled street, as well as pedestrians. Faith needs action. Without that action, why have the faith? Why have standards? Why have guidelines and rules? Make the right decision. So let's leave you with this. Imagine this fight bill for next spring. Fire trucks versus bicycles and kids. Trash vehicles versus dog walkers and owners. Recycling vehicles versus strollers with parents and grandparents like myself. Snowplows versus parked cars. Dump trucks versus skateboarders and roller skaters. If you've seen this site, you've thought in your mind, this is not right. He talks about the expansion of the national fire facilities and the parks, wonderful, we all need, the city's growing, wonderful, but it seems like they're compacting everything into one lot of land and putting the burden of the access road on us. Not our problem, they need to get a bigger spot themselves then. What happens when they get a little bigger, a little bigger? Is it going to be an access road, the second one up the street, third one around the corner? So who would win in those fight bills, people? The kids, the pedestrians, or a fire truck, or a snowplow, or something other?
You are at time share, so if you wouldn't mind wrapping up?
Thank you. So the last thing, you made a point, is they've always been in a good relationship with the neighbors, they have that bond. Don't aid tonight in helping to break that bond with the neighborhood before that bond has even started, by voting yes for that special exception. Deny it.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
So with that, we're going to close the public hearing and open up the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board?
It, it is always a tough decision when we have a full neighborhood show up, an alderman for that, for that area, two potential aldermen, out of four in that race. Passions are high on, on this, this, on this case. I think, I think we're all in agreement that the fire department does a great job and needs all the tools that they can, they can find to do an even better job, train their folks, recruit their folks, make, make some extra revenue for the city by bringing some other folks in. When I, when I take a look at this, this case here, if we were just taking this access road, not taking into any account what's, you know, how we're accessing that road, if we just dropped it in the middle of this map, I actually think that, that Brendan and his group did a great job putting, putting this plan together. The fact that they moved it down 80 feet, 100 feet, whatever, to avoid some of the wetlands, I think is commendable. Somebody made a statement, if this was 20 years ago, they wouldn't have cared, they just would have thrown some fill in there and off we go. And I really think that's the world we live in now, and, and I appreciate that for anybody who's paid attention to my votes over the years. I hate anything having to do with wetlands and disturbing that. You know, that being said, this, this was a pretty good plan. So I will say, when I look at the special exception worksheet, there are five criteria. When I look at, at the wetlands plan itself, I can, I can be in support, but I'm having a hard time, if I had to make a motion, to, to get to three and five with a straight face when we have the whole neighborhood here, the whole neighborhood here, in addition to Westgate and, and, you know, some other folks from that area. So, so I am definitely looking forward to what the rest of the board has to say. I, I really don't know where I'm going with my vote at this point, so I am interested to see, but the criteria, I, we have to meet the five criteria, and if I can't do that with a straight face, then I, then I would not be able to be in support. That being said, I do think the plan put together was, was very well put together, and, and I want to support that group, it's just a matter of those vehicles getting there. But I do want to address a couple of additional things. I would rather have fire trucks coming through my neighborhood than Amazon vans. I watch those Amazon vans flying through my neighborhood every night, and I will take a fire truck any day because I think these folks do really well. I have never seen a fire truck speeding through my, I have a very quiet neighborhood, they, they are very respectful. I, I didn't know that they could track the, the trucks, but that makes sense to me. I don't think there's going to be a lot of numbers here, but, but one person did make the testimony, they've got cars parked in the street and, and fire engines may not be able to get by that. You know, at the end of the day, the fire engines, any public street, the fire engines have to be able to get down that street, so I'm not going to hold that against the, the fire engines. I've just got to get through criteria three and five on this. I, I don't think the, the safety of the speed of those vehicles is a big issue, you know, as some of the folks talked about, they're more concerned about the runners not paying attention or running into traffic. We all have that, that we deal with. But that being said, I'd like to hear what the rest of the board has to say.
Mr. Leno.
Mr. Neely, did you perhaps mean, issued two rather than three on the special exception?
I did, I'm sorry, two and five.
Okay, I wondered, all right.
I was on a roll, sorry.
You were. Like Mr. Neely, I definitely appreciate everything the, the fire department does, and, yes, they absolutely need a training facility, and it does sound as if they need to expand their training facility. And like Mr. Neely said, if I just look at the wetlands part, just all by itself, ignoring everything else, you know, it, it looks like a good plan, but I think I need to look at the larger goal here, and looking at the, the points of law that we are required to say that, or met, I can't see that number two, which is the requested use, will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. I, I don't see how this proposal as a whole meets that, and the fifth one is the requested use will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood in which it is located, nor be detrimental to the health, morals, morals or welfare of the city. We have lots of testimony that simply the existence of this access road and its use, and intended use, would be detrimental to the neighborhood, and I firmly believe that. I live in a quiet neighborhood, I used to live many years ago in the vicinity of, of Westgate Village. I didn't realize at the time how close I was to the landfill, but it's actually on the map, one of the maps that was in the application. When I see fire trucks come through, they're doing something specific, you know, they're responding to, to an event, or they're coming to clear fire hydrants and things like that. What I don't see is a steady stream of, of trucks from Nashua and from other communities coming through my neighborhood to get somewhere. And I'm familiar with Westgate Village and, and that road, I use that frequently, I still do, and Teak Drive I am familiar with. I, I just, I can't get there, I really can't, for the, the whole, the whole application. And I, I wish that the city had found another solution. I've become disturbed at, at the number of times that I think the city has overstepped, but, you know, and my votes tend to reflect that. But here, it was, it's, this just doesn't seem right to me, and I cannot support it.
Mr. Pachan.
So I, I'm, you know, not voting on this issue as the alternate member, but similar to Mr. Viall and Mr. Neely, I, the criteria that the use won't create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, I mean, I do think the fire department is going to be as cautious as possible, but this is a lot of congestion in that neighborhood, and I don't think it meets that criteria. And as to number five, that the use will not be, will impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood, this is a very quiet, as, as all of you folks have testified, this is a quiet residential street, and I just don't think this use is in line with that. We've had several pieces of testimony that property values will go down, we haven't had anything to, to, you know, to, to combat that, so if, if I were voting, I would be voting no.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Shaw.
I, I don't really think I'm in much different spot than, than fellow board members who have already spoken. I'm probably a little less strong as far as the item two, as far as the traffic congestion and, and pedestrian safety. I'm much more an issue with the number five, as far as the character of the neighborhood. That's the one that I think, to me, is really, I can't get past. The other thing I'd like to note, and I, and I mean, I do really appreciate, I think, yeah, good application, I think if this were just a standard wetland thing, I'd be fine, or if this was literally just the access, gated access road that essentially had no regular planned use, which is, which is essentially what, I think, from what we've been able to discern, kind of what the landfill plans have indicated. And in fact, the only reason this has shifted is to try to be less impactful to the wetlands, and, and so I think we all appreciate that and don't have too much of an issue of it moving from the paper street extension, I can't remember the name of the road at the moment, but, but my other thing about all this is, it does kind of go a bit to, and maybe this is, you know, maybe this is even speaking to the faith comment, but, you know, the, the landfill has always been kind of a tricky proposition for the city, it's a, it's a, it's actually saves the city a lot of money because we're not paying, you know, the fees, in fact, we, we bring in revenue from tipping fees and all those other things, but it also is set in the middle of a pretty dense residential area, and I think there's been a lot done through the years to essentially assure residents that really the, the egress and ingress and all that for the landfill is going to be happening out on West Hollis Street, like it always has. And so this kind of, I feel like breaks that, that bond or that agreement or that understanding to some, to some degree as well. And I, I find that, that troubling. I don't know if it really fits in the, the criteria, but I do think it's, it's ultimately something important for the city to be considering the way we as a city are deciding how to use this property. The other thing I want to comment on is, because it was brought up a lot, and, I mean, I, I actually wish in a way we would have had the other DPW case here, because it would have been clear, because then we would have had the application, we'd had the paperwork, all that stuff in front of us, but I don't, my understanding is even though there's some additional wetland impact that it's being, that we're going to hear that case about, is I'm assuming that has to do with what's going on essentially over at the other, complete other side of the landfill, by the, where basically the entrance is, and where the garage is going to be placed, and that it has nothing to do with any sort of additional traffic utilizing this proposed teak, teak road access. So I think there's been concern that that was going to happen, and some of the testimony seems to have been really noting that, but I'm pretty sure that that is not what that application is about, and that's why, you know, they're obviously very different uses and all, but I don't think it has anything to do with proposal for access through teak. So I just wanted to put that out there, maybe I'll be surprised two weeks from now, or, well, we'll get our packets in, in, within the week, or whatever, but, yeah, so I just wanted to also note that. But, yeah, I, I can't, I can't get the support on this primarily because of criteria five.
Well, editorialize a little on your last comment, just, I had mentioned it at the A prior meeting, if not the last meeting, that for me, it would be helpful to see an overall master plan for the Four Hills site. You know, Deputy Director Falk did send out an overview of the existing site, but some of these questions are really, how do these different uses interrelate? How do they interconnect? And what's the longer-term plan? And, and I don't, I don't know that. I don't know what this facility's going to look like, I only see the access road. But, but I think I'm in agreement with everybody who's, who's spoken so far, and I will say, I, I really struggled with this. For me, it is criterion number five where I struggle. I do believe that the, you know, special conditions for the wetlands, special exception itself, have, have been met. I'm satisfied with the input that we received from the Conservation Commission. I stumble on that the requested use will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or the immediate neighborhood, that's really where I'm struggling, and part of my struggle was, well, they can put a road in, and if it weren't for the wetland, the access road could go in, it would never come to this board. So the, putting in an access road from Teak Drive is not really the issue in a sense, it's the impact to the wetland that brings them here. Yet, I don't see how we can separate the intended use of the road from the application that's, that's in front of us. I just can't make that split in my mind, and as I think about it, with any special exception that comes before us, we want to understand the nature of the use. What is its proposed? How is it going to be used? And, and that's where I really, I, I do struggle. It's not just that there would be a change in the neighborhood, of course there would be, any development would cause a change. And I, and I will say that, you know, when I first came out here, this is a part of a city that I'm less familiar with, and I turned into Westgate Village, I thought, well, I, I'm, I'm wrong, my GPS is off, right? And then I start driving around the neighborhood, and I keep going, and, you know, it's like, turn right here, I'm like, no, this can't be, it, it, you know, I'll go there and then I'm going to pull out my packet and packet and check, and I put something in wrong, right? This is really buried in a residential neighborhood. And I have to say, I was struck, you know, by that fact, and I can't get past the degree to which the character of this neighborhood would change irreparably. So, yeah, I can't get past that one.
Mr. Boucher.
Like the rest of you, I also have the same feelings. The wetlands exception, I think, is well done, and any other case would not be an issue for me. I differ just a little bit is, and Chief Buckson really explained how they were going to get this, was the fact that it's through grant money. If this, for me, at this point, if it were just for the use of the National Fire Department, I think I would support it. But I think what the unknown is, is what it's going to attract from other communities that want to use this facility. So that kind of concerns me there. I think if it was just for the National Fire Department, I think the use would be diminished, obviously, from what we understand now from what this site could be, could be used for potential. So that's kind of where my thoughts were.
Mr. Shaw.
The, as I understand it, we have been, we have this basically use of the facility, the existing facility, by up to a half a dozen other departments already. And as I think Chief Buckson noted, that some of the grant money is even about, due to the fact that it's a regional training facility, not just exclusive for Nashua. So, and in, you know, the application was, I think, essentially trying to note that, and it was comprehended, I think, you know, that there would be the other fire departments. So, I mean, maybe it's possible it grows even beyond that, but I think already there's basically about maybe five or six other fire departments that I think are already expected to be using it besides Nashua, which I agree is a big part of what, what drives this, you know, much more significantly, and we might have been hearing about instead of two to three times a week on average, ultimately, maybe it would have really been like, on average, less than one time a week, other than maybe that spring, you know, timing. And even that, I don't know. That still is a lot, because there's no getting around, you know, the, there's just going to be a bigger change to this neighborhood. But clearly intent, and I think the basis of the usage of this facility, et cetera, is beyond just Nashua, so, yeah.
And I would just add that, you know, were it simply the waterline, I think, because that would really be about wetland impact and not changing the character of the neighborhood, I may feel differently. Were it just a secondary emergency access road, I may feel differently.
Yeah.
It's the level of usage.
Yeah. That, I was trying to kind of get to that at one point in my comments, too. You know, as far as, if there's just an emergency access road, you know, there's a number of, you know, new developed neighborhoods that have those put in for fire access reasons, actually, and they remain as just a gated roadway that never does get used by anybody other than emergency vehicles if necessary. So that's the kind of thing I think would, you know, would be very different to have that added. But a road that has a lot of, you know, frequent usage is very different.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Not seeing too many takers. You want it? You want to do it?
Sure. Sure. Sorry, I got to find the description. Okay. The case is City of Nashua, owner Chief Steve M. Buckston, Nashua Fire Rescue applicant, 25 Teak Drive in 840 West Hollis Street, Sheet C Lot 1320 and Sheet D Lot 54, requesting special exception from land use code section 190-112 to work in a 40-foot other wetland and wetland buffer to construct a gated driveway from Teak Drive to the Four Hills landfill property for the proposed fire training facility. This is in the R9 and R30 slash GMZ zones, Ward 5. I'm going to make a motion that we deny the special exception based on all five criteria not being met in the, in the belief of this board. While the board does believe that the first criteria is met, which is simply that the use is a special exception in the use matrix, so that's, that's definitely covered. And we also believe that there is no indication that the third criteria that we typically talk about being that requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer systems, or any other municipal systems to such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area, or any other area of the city will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. And we also do believe that the special regulations for the wetland standards are being met as proposed. However, we do not feel that two of the criteria, item two, as we normally noted, the being that the requested use, in this case, we believe it will create undue traffic congestion or possibly unduly impair pedestrian safety. And also, the fifth criteria, we do not believe is being met, and that is that the requested use will, in this case, we believe, impair the integrity and be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood in which it is located, and it will be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of the city. There has obviously been extensive testimony, extensive discussion. I think the board, again, as noted by what I just noted with the criteria, does believe that the application and proposal for working in the wetland is fine, but the, essentially, ultimately, I think, because of the level of expected traffic of the fire trucks throughout the year, with some heavier usage in the springtime training session, but, but even overall, the two to three times a week, the board feels that this is something that is just not tenable for the kind of quiet residential neighborhood that this has been proposed in. And so we do not believe the special exception criteria are met, and therefore, again, the motion is to deny the special exception request.
Second. Second by Mr. Delano. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion to deny?
The special exception is denied. There is a 30-day window of appeal during which time a motion for reconsideration could be filed. Any questions on that point, of course, refer to Mr. Falk. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Do we want to take a five-minute recess to let folks guess?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Hope it was at least interesting. All right, so I'm going to read the next case into the record. The application of Edison Arna Arana and Lord Soria, if I said that correctly, 45 Charlotte Avenue, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach three feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback. That's on the Charlotte Ave side, to construct an attached seven-by-36 front farmer's porch. Are the applicants present? So if you would mind just stating your name and address for the record, and tell us what you'd like to do.
Yes. My name is Jason Holden, owner of Holden &amp; Son Home Improvements and Duxed by Design. I live at 10 Roseanne Circle in Windsor Pond, which is also actually in the Westgate area.
My name is Tito Arana. I'm actually the son of the applicants.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, so the proposal for the farmer's porch is consistent with the neighborhood homes that are already, have similar features directly across the street, right next to the Charlotte Ave School, is another home that does have a farmer's porch, and there are multiples down that street. So I think it'll improve the curb appeal, enhance the property values. This is a corner lot, so they do pose an issue where they have two front, front sets, you know, two fronts of the house. The porch maintains a traditional, is going to maintain a traditional New England-style There's minimal impact on the setback, as you know, we're only asking for three feet. Currently, there's a fire hydrant about a foot and a half off from the sidewalk, and from the backside of that to the front of their current concrete steps is 25 feet. We're looking to make the deck six feet deep with a one-foot overhang. That's why I'm asking for seven feet. I know that, you know, the roof line itself isn't something that would be impeding on that setback, but just asking for three feet to be safe. Obviously, I stated that the hardships, you know, are, is because of the fact they have two front, you know, two, two fronts to the home. Without the variance, the property owner would be deprived of reasonable use or, reasonable use or improvement that similar homes in that neighborhood do already enjoy. There's no substantial change in usage density. The porch is not adding living space, but rather an open covered entry. It does not intensify use, add occupants, or increase impervious coverage in any, in any sort of way. The public benefit is safety. The addition enhances the safe access, especially in climate weather, improves snowstorm control by directing any sort of runoff, provides a stable, safe, code-compliant platform for entry and access to the dwelling. In the spirit of the setback and zoning regulations, is to prevent overcrowding, ensure safety, and maintain aesthetics, all of which this project satisfies. Granting this variance upholds the intent of the ordinance to maintain orderly development while allowing a modest and a harmonious architectural improvement. The community support and precedent other nearby properties have, like I stated, already have this. This demonstrate, demonstrates precedence and community acceptance of such modifications, if possible, never mind, that was, it's not denying, stating to provide photos, which you guys already have of what they look like, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That is all I have on, on, there you are.
Very good. Anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Questions from the board? Mr. Shaw.
Just kind of, would you say, it seems like, it's a little bit hard to tell in a way, but does this side of the house, or this frontage of the house, if you will, where the porch is proposed, is that used as like the primary kind of front of the house, whereas then the other side with the driveway and the parking and everything? That also seems like it might be really more functionally the front of the house, so in this case, I'm just curious, because to me, it goes a little bit to the hardship noted about the two frontages.
Yeah.
But I'm kind of just curious as far as the way the house is kind of used, because it seems almost like where the farmer's porch is proposed is functioning, it looks almost like maybe more like a side of the house than the front functionally, but could you comment on that?
If you are driving up Charlotte Ave, that is the face of it. Charlotte Ave School is directly across the street. They have grandchildren who live there, so the functionality of using that as an entry and exit way. The other side is used just as much due to the fact that, you know, the driveway is right there and the mailbox. Both are used very equally.
Okay, all right.
And this is, again, this is something that while they're waiting for the school to get out, you know, the grandparents can sit right out front and be able to, you know, I don't know if you've ever been over that neighborhood, but pickup time is a nightmare. And so this is something they can sit back and relax comfortably on their own property until.
Pretty much that way. All of the elementary schools these days, and the middle schools.
My son went to Charlotte Ave, I'm very familiar with.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Sorry, just the, it probably was somewhere in here, and I just keep forgetting it now, but it doesn't look like the depth of the farmer's porch is, okay, six-foot depth, is that what it is?
Six-foot depth, so currently theirs from the face of the house to the front of the steps. We're at five feet. I'm asking for another foot for the actual farmer's porch, because, and that's to the face of it, because reality is that we're going to be six inches back with the posts to where there's actually room for people to, you know, for them to be able to sit down and room to be able to get up and move around. The seven foot that I'm asking for is because the roof line itself will extend out a foot past the actual farmer's porch, just for, you know, weather-wise, you know, it's not coming right in onto the porch itself.
But the reality is, without some encroachment, you'd have to build a two- or three-foot depth farmer's porch, which is essentially impractical for usage other than standing, right? And so, okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Other questions from the board? You're free to take a seat.
Appreciate it.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing and open up the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I'm in support. I mean, as I was, you know, my testimony probably indicated, you know, they're not doing something all that large, and to do anything that's even at all functional has to have some encroachment. The encroachment that they're asking for is relatively minimal, and as noted by the applicant, there is the issue of the two frontages. Maybe in one sense, the fact that they're using both of them somewhat like frontages, it makes a little more sense that, you know, it's like, maybe it's not quite as strong to me as a hardship like sometimes we have, but this encroachment is also so limited that I don't have an issue with it.
Other thoughts? Mr. Leno.
Yeah, I concur with Mr. Shaw. I think it's a reasonable request and would be attractive, and I support it.
Yeah, and I would agree, and just to note, it's, you know, the encroachment is minimal, and it really would not at all be out of character with the neighborhood.
Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Neely.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Edison Arana and Lord's Soria. I'm sure I killed those names, sorry. Owners, 45 Charlotte Avenue, sheet 59, lot 169, requesting variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, to encroach three feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback on Charlotte Avenue, to construct an attached seven-foot by 36-foot front farmer's porch. This is located in the RA zone in Ward 2. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest in that many houses, including a couple of neighbors there in close proximity, have farmer's porches. That is a normal addition to a house in the northeast of a farmer's porch. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed, because the actual measurements were from the fire hydrant, which is a couple of feet back from the street, so in reality, if somebody didn't know the property line was not at the street, they actually would not be encroaching any closer. Granting the variance would do substantial justice for a couple of reasons. The applicant did testify that it needs to be a certain size, so they don't, so they have the ability to sit down and still move around the deck, so six feet would do that as a one-foot overhang for the northeast weather. We did not have any specific testimony on the value of surrounding properties. However, I would surmise that the property value would go up by adding on a farmer's porch. And the unnecessary hardship, as noted, is that this house has two fronts to the property, and the fact that the applicant has asked to use this on a daily basis, waiting for the children to come from across the street, gives them a place to wait that is out of the weather elements of the northeast, and it is similar to some other properties in the area that also have the farmer's porches as well. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve the variance.
It's your second. Second by Mr. Boucher. Discussion. All those in favor? Your variance request is granted.
As I noted, there is a 30-day window of appeal, but I think it's highly unlikely, since nobody came to speak in opposition.
Okay. Until you're free to proceed. All right, so I'll read the next case into the record. The next case is the application of Consortium Leasing Group. It's the owners. Tyler R. Jones is the applicant, 74 Northeastern Boulevard, Unit 16, requesting a use variance from land use code section 190-15, table 15-1, to allow a private tattoo studio. And that's in the PI zone.
That's correct.
Would you like to state your name and address for the record?
My name is Tyler Jones, and my address is 30 Meadowview Circle.
And tell us about what you'd like to do.
So I have it written out, just so I stay on track. First of all, I want to say thank you for accepting my application and giving me your time this evening. The use of my space that I would like to give a variance to occupy is very unique. I'm in the business of skin dermographics, also known as tattooing. I personally create designs by hand with a pencil on paper for each client individually. This is a premium service that I offer. It is not a walk-in shop. I charge a consultation fee, a drawing fee, a premium for the tattoo application. I've had the privilege to tattoo professional athletes across the board, and outside of them, all of my clientele are serious about what they are collecting on their body. If I personally owned a commercial property, I would be very hesitant to give space to a tattoo artist. I would not rent to most tattoo studios unless it was someone like myself. I have very high standards for my studio, the space inside as well as the space outside on the property grounds. There will be no lurking or hanging around in front of the building or behind. There will be no vaping, smoking allowed inside the building or outside. I've always had and will continue to have a studio space that has helped raise the standard of the industry. Because of the large-scale work that I do, I have a limited clientele. I only tattoo two to three people a week, so the traffic in and out at the studio is very low. I will not have a sign that says the word tattoo. At most, I will have a sign as a landmark for people to be able to find me for parking The neighbors have zero issue with the use, and the board president is here tonight, the board of where I'm purchasing. Multiple other businesses there that occupy space have also had to get a variance, because it is zoned for industrial. So to kind of sum it up, my plan with a tattoo studio is to run a professional business with minimal traffic, a high-end clientele, and I hope my presentation here today expressed that to the board, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Seeing none, you're free to take a seat.
Okay. I did bring, like, an example of some of the artwork that I do, just to kind of showcase that it's not just your average run-of-the-mill walk-in shop. Some of these pieces require, you know, eight to 10 hours per session with each person, and most of my clients, you know, like, one body part, such as their arm, could be four to six sessions. So not only is it low volume throughout the week, but the clientele turnover is pretty limited. So that is all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this application?
Hi, my name's Sarah Marie Cole, 43 Wood Street, Nashua. I own four units in North Bridge Office Park, and I'm the board president over there, and just wanted to show and support. What Tyler does is very high-end and classy, and I welcome that in the park. We are seeing that our units are a great space for, you know, we have physical therapists, dentists, estheticians, so while we're zoned industrial, this kind of shift in what these units actually provide for small business owners are great for something like this. I think your unit is 2,400 square feet. They're small office suites that are perfect for things like this, so appreciate that, you know, you take that into consideration. There's other body-touching businesses all throughout the park that have received their variances, too. So, thank you.
Questions from the board? Seeing none, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody who'd like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? We do have one letter and email that came in from Rebecca Pacheco. To whom this may concern, it has come to my attention that a tattoo parlor has expressed interest in purchasing within the complex. I've been preparing to rent space within the same proximity as the above-mentioned property with the idea that the integrity of the surrounding would further promote the growth of my business. With the nature of tattooing, these are my concerns. One, incompatibility with existing professional use. Tenant mix and clientele concerns. The clientele attracted to a tattoo parlor may be demographically different than those who are visiting law offices, real estate firms, or medical professionals. There could be concerns over increased traffic, increased foot traffic, loitering, or clientele behavior that might make other visitors or business clients uncomfortable, like smoking or vaping. Increased noise and activity. Tattoo parlors may generate more noise, especially with music or social activity, which could disrupt the quiet professional atmosphere expected in office environments. This could interfere with the day-to-day operations of businesses that rely on calm and controlled setting, like therapists, attorneys, or financial planners. Three, branding and building identity. Buildings with a consistent professional image are easier to market to upscale or corporate tenants. The addition of a tattoo parlor changes the building's brand and may deter high-end tenants or clients who value a uniform professional atmosphere. Allowing this could lead to more lenient, non-professional uses. There's already a recovery center neighboring this, neighboring the busking in question, creating a potential for a loitering hub. I didn't quite understand, busking, I didn't read. I don't know if you were provided with a copy of this letter or not. I know you've addressed some of these comments, but would you like to provide a rebuttal?
Sure. That's a phoning.
Yes.
So, I was aware of that letter. I received it yesterday, and I also had something prepared, because I had a feeling that would come up. And I thank you for letting me read from this, because I am a little nervous up here, so it helps me stick to the point. So I would like to address the email that was sent to you yesterday opposing the variance. There is a frivolous story behind that action. Past my studio, further up the road, there is a salon suite, and the owner of that suite was trying to purchase the unit that I am now buying. I signed a purchase and sales agreement before she had proceeded with hers, and she was pushed out of the deal. I had heard gossip around town that she was upset by this, and the day before today, I received that email, and the name of the girl who had made the complaint was one of her employees. So I did a little bit of digging, and I personally reached out to the owner of that beauty parlor and that girl, because I genuinely wanted to know, like, if there was a real concern or if this was just gossip. Because when the variance sign was put out in front of where I'm going, initially, the neighbors right next to me, there's a husband and wife that run a business, they sell things online, they were concerned, so I went out of my way to go there to meet them and greet them and explain thoroughly what I do and show them images of the tattoos I do, and they were instantly relieved. And I understand, because again, if I had a studio space or a commercial, I would be very hesitant to rent to a tattoo studio. So I reached out to the people involved, involved that email, and to kind of sum it up, when I went on Instagram to message the girl, I realized that she was following me. And then I saw that about a year ago, she sent me a consultation fee, and she had inquired about a tattoo, and that was pretty comical, because she was slandering my, you know, artist or my clientele, but I reached out.
I do appreciate your concerns, but I think if we could kind of keep it to the issues that was raised in the email rather than the person involved.
Yeah, I guess just to wrap all it up, it seemed very frivolous. I think it was more about the space that I was getting that they wanted, but addressing the things that she was concerned about, those are real concerns. Whether she had brought them up or not, everything that I had prepared for today would have touched on those things anyhow, so.
Very good.
Okay.
Questions from the board? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And since there was nobody in opposition to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Neely.
We've had several cases up in this complex. It's a fascinating complex with a great, it's a great community up there of all different businesses. I'm in favor of this. I think this business that he offers, sounds like it'll fit in great to what's going on there. I appreciate that all the concerns that we received from this person were addressed. I'm kind of intrigued by the no specific signage, but, you know, whatever works, but I think this would be a good addition, and the fact that the, one of the tenant's owner came here and said that he'd be a great addition as well, really just sealed the deal.
Other thoughts?
I would agree. I'm also in support, I think, just by the general nature of this complex, it really is a professional office environment, it's not an industrial environment, and I see this, the proposed use, as very similar to the variety of other uses, as was mentioned, in there that generally are taking clients on an appointment basis. It's not a retail center, it's not a drive-by, so for those reasons, I think it's consistent with the character of, if you will, that professional neighborhood.
Does anybody want to make a motion? I'll do it. I'd like to make a motion that the application of Consortium Leasing Group, owner Tyler R. Jones, applicant, 74 Northeastern Boulevard, Unit 16, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-15, table 15-1, number 135, to allow a private tattoo studio in the PA zone be approved, I'm sorry, the PI zone be approved. We find that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because as noted, it really is consistent with the character of the neighborhood that it's in. This is a professional office complex that has multiple businesses, including salons, estheticians, that are really similar in nature, taking clients on an appointment basis. We find that it is within the spirit of the ordinance, or the spirit of the ordinance would be observed in general. The spirit of the ordinance is, of course, to allow reasonable use of property, and it's also to retain areas that are appropriate for professional and office and industrial-related uses, and in this case, we do find that this use is consistent with that range of professional types of uses that exist in the area. Granted, variance would do substantial justice, it would allow this business to operate in this location, it would allow a reasonable use for the owner of the property, and there really is no harm. Although granted, we did have a letter stating some concerns, we see no harm to the general of. have a letter stating some concerns, we see no harm to the general public. We find no evidence that the values of surrounding properties would be diminished, and we had no testimony to that effect. And we do find that owing to special conditions of the property, and in this case, those are the general nature of the uses that are in this community, relatively small, not really industrial in character, and that denying it would result in unnecessary hardship because there is no fair and substantial relationship between the general purposes of the ordinance, as noted and as applied to this property, and the proposed use is a reasonable use. So for those reasons, I move that the variance request be granted. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor? Your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
The signs are also controlled by the director.
Ah.
There's limitations to what you can put on any, any door in the park, so that wouldn't have been an issue.
Excellent.
Thank you, guys. Have a good day.
Take care. Good luck. Next is the application of James and Christie Basada, hopefully I said that correctly, revocable trust. Christie Basada trustee is the applicant at 12 Nutmeg Drive, requesting a variance from land use code 190-131 to encroach three feet into the six-foot side-yard setback to remove an eight-by-ten shed and replace it with a 10-by-14 shed at the RNAI Zone in Ward Nine. As the applicant, there you are. Maybe I'm just stating your name and adjusting for the record.
Good evening. My name is Christie Basada. I live at 12 Nutmeg Drive in Nashua. And we are applying to, in 1998, we moved into this house, and there was a horrible sheet metal shed on site, and we are seeking to remove that shed. I believe we don't need the variance for that. When the next-door neighbor did a survey quite a few years ago, maybe 20 years ago, we realized that the corner of that shed was about two feet from the property line. Again, we did not locate it there. It has existed there harmoniously with all of the rust it's accumulating, and it's really time to replace it. We are seeking to increase the size of it because if you've looked at the aerial photographs I included, there's a really large cul-de-sac there. The city policy is that the abutting neighbors have to take care of that. However, only two of us do. We've tried all kinds of things to get help. Jim and I have both had medical problems. Our other neighbor who helps just retired. They're gone all the time. So we'd really like to just get a lawn tractor and put it in there so we can ride down, zip around, and put it away and not be all achy from, you know, from taking care of this. In terms of the, our next-door neighbor, we spoke with him. He didn't understand what a setback was. I explained it to him. He said, "Oh," he thought I was trying to put it in his yard. I don't want to do that. I love my neighbors. So we are, we're not encroaching on the neighbors' yards. We're just encroaching on the setback. If we are able to replace in the same location, we're actually going to come in a foot just to be safe. If you look at the aerial photographs, again, there's sheds everywhere. And I frankly, I don't think any of them did this. And substantial justice to us, the really, the difficulty with our yard, if you look at the pictures, is that you come out, and then the first-floor windows of the houses behind us are higher than our second-floor windows. So we have this vertical issue on the left side of the house, vertical. And we also have lots of mature trees. You can also see in those pictures. So we have to have access for tree crews, and we would prefer to have access for emergency services. And so just keeping it back there allows us that access to the backyard. I think that covers it, unless I've missed something.
Questions from the board? Seeing none. You can take a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody who'd like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing.
We have a letter.
Oh, we do have one letter from the board. You are right. Thank you. To whom it may concern, we are writing in support of James and Christie Basada's revocable trust variance request that will be heard on October 14, 2025, for the address of 12 Nutmeg Drive. If you have any questions, please reach out to us. Jeff and Katie Libree, 33 Yarmouth Drive. Thank you for making that easy for me. All right. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Leno?
You know, we see, we see applications like this almost every meeting. And yes, I mean, the sheds are frequently placed within setbacks. I would say that probably it's more likely that they're within setbacks than not in the city. So I, I fully support the application, and that's it.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I was just going to say I'm in support. I just have no issues or concerns.
Any other thoughts? Yeah, I just add that there is no further encroachment in the side setback. You know, it's a larger shed, but it's coming into their property. So needless to say, there's no impact to the neighborhood. Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Peschek?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for James, James and Christie Basada, revocable trust, owner's Christie Basada, trustee applicant, 12 Nutmeg Drive, Sheet C, Lot 1250, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-31 to encroach three feet into the six-foot side yard setback to remove an eight-by-ten shed and replace it with a 10-by-14 shed, seeing the RNAI Zone, Ward Nine. We find that granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest because this would be replacing an old metal shed with a brand-new shed. We find that the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because replacing that, it's replacing a shed that's, was found many years after the homeowner was there, to be already in the setback. So again, it's not encroaching the corners that are encroaching a setback. I'm not encroaching any more than they are now. Granting the variance would do substantial, substantial justice because it allows the homeowner to store their lawn equipment safely out of the, out of the weather. The, we found there is no testimony. So we find that the values of surrounding properties would most likely not be diminished, will not be diminished by improving the shed on the property. As far as unnecessary hardship, again, there is a few special conditions on why, to probably why the shed's in this location. Again, the applicant did discuss the fact that it's in this location because of the topography on the backside of the property and the need to get large equipment in to do tree service. So we find that the proposed use is reasonable one, again, because it allows the homeowner to replace an aging shed and use it to its full capability. So we're there to make a motion to approve the variance.
Through second? Seconded by Mr. Neely. Discussion. All those in favor? Your request is granted. Good luck. Next is the application of Bellins Incorporated, the owners, Jillian Arsenal, Marshall Signs, the applicant, 14B Railroad Square, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-104, table 104-11, to exceed the number of projecting signs. One permitted, two proposed. It's in the DI/MU Zone in Ward Three.
Do you guys have color copies or no? Do you want a color?
Not color. Sure.
My name is Jillian Arsenal, and I work at Marshall Signs on 51 Lowell Street, right here in Nashua. So currently, my customer with the Vaporamas, they are taking over the old Portland Pie location on 14B and Roadhouse, I'm sorry, Road, Railroad Square. And it used to have on the back end the, as it was a cabinet look, like maker was back there, they had two different businesses, two different blade signs, like, you know, projecting signs. Right now, it's only going to be one big business, but because of it being pretty much just like this stage, a nice, beautiful arc, you kind of can't really see the fact that it's all one big business. It kind of can look like it's two separate businesses. And eventually, my customer would like to eventually kind of sublet the back end, once he has it all finished being renovated, to another company, like another customer of his. But for right now, he is trying to just have it be both, like, a blade sign for both his businesses, like for his one business, the Vaporama store. But they're not going to be that big. They're going to be relatively small signs, so we don't have them, like, hanging, like, too low. They're going to be about 13 feet high from the grave. I'm also making it so that they are not, they don't swing. They're going to be nice and sturdy. That way, I don't have to worry about people, like, from Panucci's coming over and hitting them or anything like that. But that was pretty much the kind of nitty-gritty of it all, is just being able to see that it's all one continuous building, one business, when you're walking on that street, because you kind of can't see that it is actually the same business all the way across, when you're just walking on that side of the street. That's about it.
Questions from the board? Seeing none. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anybody who'd like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? And yes, you can take a seat. Seeing none. And I don't believe we have any correspondence, so I will close the public hearing and open the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Neely?
So this is a unique building with the curve. It's also in a very busy intersection as well. So I'm a firm believer, the more signs, the better, since there's parking on, on both sides. That's certainly not a place for people to hit their brakes and, you know, try to make decisions after the fact. We also have the historic commission. Also, they also gave a five-to-zero vote on this. I think this is very stylish and very nice. So for those reasons, I'm in favor.
Other thoughts? Mr. Patrick?
Yeah, it is pretty cool. And, I mean, I don't think will, I mean, I think it looks nice on, on the business. And I, I mean, I don't think it's, I think it'd be in addition to the area.
Agreed. And I would just say indefinitely, for me, the, the curve of the building, it's right up to the street, given how long it is and curved it is, and it does appear with the word historically, more than one business in that building, as long as I can remember. So it seems certainly reasonable to me. Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Neely?
All right. I would like to make a motion to approve the variance for Bellins Incorporated, owner Jillian Arsenal, Marshall Signs, applicant 14B Railroad Square, Sheet 43, Lot 95, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-104, table 104-11, to exceed the maximum number of projecting signs. One permitted, two proposed. This is in the D1/MU Zone in Ward Three. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest in that the board discussed the fact that this is a historic building with a curve on a very busy intersection. So increasing the signage is best for the safety aspect of this area, as well as improving the visibility to this building for sales purposes for the owner. The spirit of the ordinance, once again, would be observed as well, same reasons as noted above, in that the location of the building and the type of signs would allow this building to be sighted from, from multiple directions, allowing the potential customers to pull into either one of the two parking lots on either side of the building. Granting the variance would do substantial justice in that these, this person here will have a total of three signs. However, the two signs are very nicely put together, relatively high for good sightlines to increase their business and keep, keep, as noted by the applicant, keep them high enough where they wouldn't be damaged by anybody walking by. For the following reasons, the value of the surrounding property would not be diminished, in our opinion. This is just going to add to the historic, historic nature of this building. And the unnecessary hardship is the curvature of the building on a main strip. It, it wouldn't look it from, looking at it from the front, but as you follow the curve, these two type of signs, the blade signs hanging out the top, really aren't going to be able to see, be seen at the same side, same time, depending on where you are when you're passing the building. So this is a very unique building in a unique area with a unique shape. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve the variance.
Do you have a second? Seconded by Mr. Leno. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Your application is passed. So good luck with your project. And finally, the ever-patient Blanda family trust.
I'm Colleen Blanda. I live at 35 Pilgrim Circle with my husband, and we would like to request a variance that will enable us to replace our current landing off the sunroom and stairs down to the backyard, side yard with a 12-by-12 deck and a set of stairs. So to do that, we need a variance that goes into the 20-foot setback.
And just for the record, it's a variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, to encroach 16 feet into their 20-foot required side yard setback. So now you can go forward.
Okay. Pilgrim Circle has 30 homes on a cul-de-sac, and our home is the only one with a homeowner that is behind our lot. You can see on the subdivision plan. And also, on the other side, that the, we're requesting the variance, there is no other residence. So there is a homeowner's owned, association-owned trail that is maintained by the association, and on the other side is a pump house. So there is no abutter that will be affected by adding the deck.
Any questions from the board? Anything else you'd like to add?
No, it's just without the variance, we cannot build a functional deck because it's just not feasible. We would be impacting the person who lives behind us as well as ourselves. So this side that we're, the right side, is really the only reasonable place to put the deck, and it would benefit us too as we age in place because we would be able to go outside and enjoy the outdoors with, not necessarily using stairs to go down into the yard. So it's a common residential feature. It will not detract from the neighborhood, and it will increase the property value, as decks usually do. So...
Very good. Questions from the board? Seeing none. You're free to take a seat.
Okay. Thank you.
And we do have, I'm not, I'm assuming you're in favor. So we, we do have one letter addressed to us, to whom it may concern. We have no objections to Frank and Colleen Blanda adding the new deck to the side of their home. We are okay with the zoning board approving the setback variance, allowing the building of this deck. Sincerely, Stephen and Lori Martin, 18 Pilgrim Circle. Great. So I'll close the-
Was there also a, the email that you sent by Frank?
I thought I had that.
Yes.
Yeah. It's in this application.
Yeah.
Here it is. And thank you for that. To whom it may concern, the Farley Road Estates HOA Annual Meeting was held on 9/13/2025. Colleen and Frank Blanda, 35 Pilgrim Circle, discussed a plan for the addition of a new deck with the members of the HOA present at the meeting, including all four HOA board members. The planned deck will be built off the right side of the house near the HOA Conservation Lot I-47. The Blandas are requesting a variance from the City of Nashua to build the deck. There are, there were no objections from any of the HOA members in attendance or the HOA board regarding the building of the deck at that location. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions or concerns regarding this matter. Stephen Martin, Farley Road Associates, HOA President, 2025. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Leno?
I'm in favor. We have lots of, the testimony basically, this is the, the only place they can reasonably put it. We have support of, of neighbors and, and the HOA. So I'm in support. We have support of neighbors and the HOA, so I'm in support.
And I would just add that as, as we've seen in these types of developments before, the lot itself is relatively small, but it's directly about a common land that can't be built on. So there's no impact to any other neighbors. Any other thoughts? Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Lino?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the Blonda Family Trust, Frank and Colleen Blonda, owners, Colleen Blonda, applicant, 35 Pilgrim Circle, Sheet I, Lot 79, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach 16 feet into the 20-foot required right yard, side yard setback to construct and attach 12-foot-by-12-foot deck with a four-foot wide staircase. This is in the R30 Zone, Ward 1. The board believes that granting the variance would be, not be contrary to public interest because it will not interfere with any of the neighbors. And we have testimony from the HOA of the residents that they're in favor of it. We believe the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because it does, the idea of setbacks is to preserve, to reduce encroachment on neighboring properties. And the positioning of this particular deck would be, would not be a problem for any of the neighbors. Granting the variance would be substantial justice to the applicant because there's no other place for them to reasonably put this deck. The board believes the values of surrounding properties would not be diminished. A deck usually enhances the value of the property and generally increases the value of the property, properties around it. There, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because of the, because of the positioning of the lot and, and the neighbors and where the house is on the property. So there is not a substantial, not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and a specific application of that provision to the property. So for all of these reasons, I make a motion to approve the variance.
Your second? Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Your variance request has been granted. Good luck. So that takes us to the minutes. I will actually, first, we'll review the agenda from the upcoming meeting. Did everybody have a chance to take a look at the agenda?
Yes.
Does anybody see any regional impact?
Do not.
No.
I did not either. So now we can move on to the minutes. And we do have two sets. We did defer the August minutes at our last meeting to this meeting because there were, there were a number of changes. Not the August. I guess we have two sets. We have September 9 and the 23rd. So the 20, ticking up September 9, and I know, Mr. Patrick, you had several changes on that. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to go through it.
I have some.
We'll get yours then.
I think the, my, my answer to the, for whatever meeting was before.
August.
Yeah. And those, those I was fine with. But I did have a couple of changes to the minutes for the 9th.
Okay. So.
Excuse me, page two, the last full paragraph that starts with Attorney Pearlman, the second sentence, he said that most of the sign would have a masonry block that is on the DPW office building. I would strike A and write the same masonry block. And then page three, the first full paragraph, the, the start of the Attorney Pearlman said the application. So one, two, the third sentence, the fourth sentence, that starts with the building is setback so much, comma, and then where it says, "And want to make sure that it is located, that it is located with a visible sign." I would put, "And they add," excuse me, add, "and they want to make sure that it's located with a visible sign." Page five, the paragraph that starts with Lisa Photo, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. The eighth line down, I think totes is misspelled, toters. I think we want to get rid of the R on toters. So it says.
Because I think, I think that's a tote.
And then.
Actually, no, I think that's a name. That's a name for like the rolling.
Oh, is that what it is?
Wizard.
Can I stand corrected and strike my correction? Then on page 10, the, the motion to actually approve the variance, I think it was you, Mr. Minkar, that actually made the motion. I think I added, well, no, I went back and looked at the tapes. I, because it says that I made the motion, but I knew that I didn't. So I think, Mr. Chair, you actually made that motion.
I believe you're correct.
And we would add, so I had, I'd had an amendment to the motion that the, about the timing of the lights, they can be turned on 24/7, except May 1st to September 30th, where they have to be turned off at 10:00.
That's, that's, that's right.
And then I think I had one other. Page 13, the paragraph that starts with John Chatfield. I think we want to, instead, where it says proper, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. The line that starts with property values, and, and I think we want to say substantial justice would be met instead of granted. Or served. Served, there we go. Served might be better. And that's all I have for that set.
I probably wrote what it said.
Right.
Fair enough. I don't, I, and we can't change, if someone says something, I'm not going to change it to another word like that. So I'll listen to it and see what it says.
Maybe if that's what he said, that's, I mean, that's fine. I think.
Okay. And any other? Mr. Lino?
Okay. Mr. Patrick hit one, one of my comments, but I have a couple others. Page four, first paragraph, second line where it says, "Where the, where the general public needs to find, that where should be which," in terms of a sign, that they need to find the sign. And more important, on page 10, it says, "Motion to approve carried five to zero." That's not correct.
You voted no.
I voted no.
That's right.
It was four to one.
I guess that is pretty important.
Yes.
Well, actually, while, while we're there, and even though I wasn't at the meeting and you just brought it up, but I don't, I, maybe I'm completely missing something, but I don't see anything that's, that notes the stipulation about the light's timing in the motion documentation.
Yeah, that's what I, I think I had mentioned that, that, that we wanted to add the point about the timing because that, that isn't in the motion.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. I don't see it here. And I even thought about it while I was reading this. I said, "Wait a minute," and then I didn't write it down.
So, Mr. Lino, did you second this as well?
I think I did, actually.
You seconded it and then voted against it?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no.
Yeah, that's creative. No, it's creative, I guess. Keep us on our toes.
But I'm not 100% certain that I did. I, I could have.
We can double check.
Yeah.
We're going to double check the motion anyway, so.
Yeah.
You can check the second.
That's, that's all for me.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I can't believe neither, especially I can't believe Mr. Patrick missed this.
What did I miss?
Because it's literally on the second line of the minutes. It says August 26 when it should say September 9.
Oh, we already changed that.
Very first page.
Yes, that's why it threw me when I was looking and I was saying.
Yeah, I looked at it and it, I didn't, I saw.
Well, because we're also used to seeing like something that'll be published on this date for the meeting on this date, and they're different. So it felt like that kind of thing.
Right, right, right. Yep. All right. Any other changes? Somebody want to make a motion to approve as amended?
Well, we don't know exactly what the amendments are.
You're right. You want to defer these to the next meeting?
I want to defer these.
All right, let's defer these to the next meeting.
Do we need to make a motion to defer?
Yes.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to defer the.
September 9.
We'll say September 9. It was noted as August 26. We're going to defer that to the next meeting so that we can get some clarification on the one specific area about the timing of the lights for the DPW.
Right.
And.
And make a motion and second.
And second.
Just double check all that.
And correcting the other, other issues that were brought up.
All those in favor?
Motion to defer, yeah.
Five oh. All right, September 23. Anybody have any changes on September 23? These were nice and short. All right, seeing none. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of September 23.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Neely. And the motion was Mr. Shaw. Although, any discussion? All those in favor? And the minutes are approved. And if there is no other business, we are adjourned.
So I didn't.